Six P M, June ninth, twenty twenty-two. We have all commissioners present, together with Charles Rudd, City Manager, Bobby Pickens, our City Attorney, and then we have Captain Usery with the Sheriff's Department, Pam Taylor, Code Enforcement, and Christina with our CRA. She's a CRA Director. So, everybody's here tonight. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Commissioner Banks, you want to go ahead and introduce them? Stand, please.
Father, once again, we come in forward to give you thanks as we give you praise and to which your name will tonight. Father, we thank you for our life and our heaven. Grandpa continues to ask you to watch over us and keep us safe while we're doing the city business. May that you bless our community, each commissioner, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. My goodness. Thank you. We have a couple of announcements. This Saturday, from two to four, the C C B C has a bat expert that is coming to town. Commissioner Burton, you want to just mention what she's going to be giving the talk on from two to four?
She's been presenting, uh, he's presenting the importance of bats and how they actually help, uh, me or my community and, uh, conservation. Uh, it's, it's pretty, we talked over the book, it is very informative. Uh, it's for all ages too, by the way. I mean, it includes children. She's gonna have live bats there for them to really try to see them. Uh, and, uh, and hopefully you can have some national barbers there. She'll have a few things to work with them on. So she's, her name is, uh, Sherry, is it Clark? She's the President of the Conservative? Hey, I'm gonna say it wrong. When I say Conservancy? Yeah, Conservancy, thank you, uh, of, uh, Baxter and Orin. So, don't forget to see them all there.
And that's gonna be over at the historic, um, his society's building in the former middle school. I believe you can go in the back door. You can go in the back parking lot on Park. Um, I don't know if any of you have ever gone to Gainesville and witnessed, they have two big bat houses there, but they are fascinating. I avoid them because they do get caught in my hair. It's, you know, it's one of those things you have to be careful of, but looking forward to that on, um, Saturday, this Saturday. We've also got Juneteenth coming up, and, uh, Angel Duke is gonna be here. She's gonna give us a presentation on that. And that's gonna be the following Saturday, and that's gonna be at Evil Lions Park. I'm sorry, Sunday, Sunday, I apologize, Sunday. And then, of course, our farmer's market. I don't know how many of you have been to our farmers and, um, art market, but we have it on the fourth Saturday of every month. We've had our second one with a tremendous turnout. And that is all going to be on the twenty-fifth, and that's gonna be from nine in the morning until two. That same day, busy day in Crescent City, we've got Red, White &amp; Blue, which is hosted by the Yacht Club. Of course, they get a lot of sponsors, including our CRA for that. And that's gonna be our fireworks in celebration of the Fourth of July here in Crescent City. So please be sure to come out for that. I know they're gonna have the street closed from Park. And, uh, there'll be a lot of vendors and hopefully some food trucks down there that afternoon and evening to, um, for those that come out. And then this Saturday, um, Sunday, I apologize, at Crescent City Kennel, they're gonna be hosting the shots for the animals from twelve to two. So anybody that needs shots, they can come out. And, um, I want to say last weekend, we have a lot going on in Crescent City. But last weekend, we had our Pops Kids and Kayaks, um, hosted by the Sheriff's Department. Tremendous amount of work goes into that. It's all volunteer, and, uh, we had a great turnout. Um, I believe everybody enjoyed. Once again, the weather held out. And, uh, very, very thankful for that. So it was a great turnout. Um, we're gonna work on some things for next year and hopefully being able to provide the children some free meals. So we've got some people that have stepped up and said they wanted to be sponsors and cook for the children, so the children can have a free meal. But it was a great day. And then I want to personally thank, we had, um, thirteen National Honor Society, it would be sixteen, sixteen total. Okay, sixteen total, National Honor Society, uh, high schoolers that came in and they worked two days here in town. They worked, um, Tuesday and Wednesday. On Tuesday, they pressure washed the sidewalk, some of the sidewalks and the gazebo over at Evil Lions Park. Some of them worked here in the office, and then some of them painted, finished painting the wall over at Dexter Park. The next day, they came in and they worked with both Karen and Christina, working on, um, things here in the office, some putting some boxes away and moving some things back and forth. So it was a tremendous help, and, um, we are most appreciative, always appreciative for that. And I think with that, um, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So let's start with, um, you know, to your agenda, we've got approval of the minutes. Got the approval of May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Those are our vote RV Trailer Workshop Minutes. On the motion?
I surrender.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. If we have any discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
Edition on page three. The third paragraph down before it says Bobby Pickens, City Attorney. Um, I would like to insert responding to Commissioner Vito's question. Um, because what went on there was something that I initiated, so.
You guys are speaking to you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thanks very much.
Um, yes, page three. Third paragraph down, before the words Bobby Pickens, just put the words responding to Commissioner Vito's question.
Okay, Karen, did you get that changed?
I did.
Okay, so we have a change. Do you, will we accept that in your motion?
I did.
With changes?
Yes.
Okay, so we have any other changes, any other comments? There are none. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Let's go to May twelfth, twenty twenty-two. We have a branding workshop minutes. While the motion?
I move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May twelfth, same day, twenty twenty-two, Special Events Workshop. We have a motion?
I surrender.
Sure.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, our regular commission meeting and our CRA meeting, those are those minutes. Do I have a motion?
I surrender.
Okay. We have a second. Do we have any discussions? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, Commission Joint Meeting, and that was with our concerned citizens of South Putnam. So do we have a motion?
I move.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At about this time, we're gonna go into, and let's, um, we've got some, our recognition proclamations and presentation. Uh, Angel Duke, I believe, is going to speak to us about Juneteenth. Give us an update on that. So Angel, if you want to come forward, and then after that, I've got, um, a special guest here that I would also like to recognize.
Angel Free Mary Lou. Our finance.
Oh, okay, we're gonna put, you want to introduce her then?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Lou will introduce you too at that time. Yeah, come on up.
Just sort of like a marriage.
It can be.
It can be. Okay, I, if you will, just do me a favor, Angel, and pull that microphone down. I know that you're having some, there you go. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Commissions, hello. I can't, my, I can't believe you. I always see you spying on the city. You're the only one. I'm blessed to manage it all, Commissioner, and thanks for this opportunity and the hat I was able to, uh, get here. And I would be remiss if I did not bring you or anyone anywhere. And that is, um, Mr. Watson. Oh, I forgot something. We will do four zero four North Place Street, Crescent City, Florida. And of course, we have these family. Okay, my team. It'll keep us in trouble here for several reasons. Uh, we don't have the same team that we had two years ago, because we didn't do it two years, as you know, because of the pandemic. So here you are, starting again. It was exciting, to say the least. Last year, I think everyone from the screen who found out that, uh, Juneteenth was being recognized as a national federal holiday. So I told the team, listen, don't feel up to it, but we're gonna push through it. We're trying to get through it, you know, as I said, the, uh, request law. Permits, it's that word. And then everyone on the screen, for twelve years, they've had Juneteenth. Here's a national federal holiday, and nobody's stepping forward. We're gonna hold it that. Some people are excited with Juneteenth. Parker will be open to all kinds of activities. We have some younger people working because now it's a month, or a couple of people. Juneteenth in the morning, uh, first of the Juneteenth, which is the nineteenth. We are celebrating Juneteenth, uh, after we, the churches, we call it the Randal Church. You guys are welcome to come out and, uh, different types of keynote speakers speaking on Juneteenth, what it means, et cetera, et cetera. And we must celebrate right with your Father's Day. So your Father's Day and Juneteenth celebration, and I think it's gonna be a moment when everyone will be able to pause. Well, I decided to do, since we can't bring everybody to us, we felt we would take the voices of the churches throughout the community. I spoke to several churches already about eleven fifty-eight A M. The pause are to ring their bell for the chimes. Letting the world know, at least part of our world know, that we are all in accord, uh, with the freedom of, uh, slaves, et cetera, et cetera. And that'll be able to bring the community together also, with one church, they don't go to the next church, they're exposed to past events. And a couple of the people, and they all have an agreement. So I think that moment actually will be the highlight of Juneteenth. Uh, I hope you guys love that year. What do you think?
I love it. We had three bells in Crescent City right uptown. Had they agreed?
I spoke to, uh, St. John's Baptist Church. And he's on vacation. There's someone in there, a young lady, has been, uh, sitting in Crescent, uh, pastor on call.
Where is that, St. John's?
St. John's Baptist Street.
That's First Baptist.
That's First Baptist.
Okay. So you must have spoken, you spoke to Bobby, maybe?
I spoke to Bobby.
Yeah.
So there's several more we cannot to.
And the, uh, Presbyterian Church right next to it, and the Episcopal Church, have bells.
Those don't create the bells. Okay, so we draft a, uh, letter going out and asking to, um, at eleven fifty-eight, eight, I mean, ten fifty-eight, eight. As not to interrupt.
At ten fifty-eight or eleven fifty-eight?
Ten fifty-eight.
Okay.
The church starts at eleven.
Right.
So.
Okay, so just before the church starts, just before church starts. Okay, I'm sorry, I put it on eleven fifty-eight. Okay.
That is the highlight of Juneteenth, and that will be the church on Sunday, will convene Baptist Church Park, and we have several great vendors. Um, also food, you know, this, because people come to eat, so that's great, as opposed to auction press.
So what time should they, people, come to the park?
It starts at one o'clock.
At one o'clock, okay. I just wanted to make sure we get the time right. Okay.
Some would be in early, um, getting set up and things of that nature, others to hang out, what the official, uh, event starts at. Yeah. I'm sorry, Susan.
Oh, you're in. Okay, I'm sorry. I don't, I was just thinking to myself.
Another great thing that's happened, I'd be remiss in not mentioning this, because, uh, as Mr. Pickens mentioned six weeks ago, when we did the dedication ceremony, we had postponed the installation of April Randolph Memorial Time because of the pandemic, of course. So the time is upon us, and we're excited. Uh, I met with Mr. Pickens myself and Sally, certain times, the, the layout where the sign will be mounted in the ground. And then we're back up to a later with orange markers, R. So when the final transportation is done, we sign, we know exactly where they were strategically placed. That is on Saturday, June eighteen, at ten A M in the morning.
Okay, and that's gonna be, um, and you told them exactly where they need to, where they need to be at.
I'm gonna be able to.
If they want to go out there for the, they're gonna have the installation, you're gonna have the actual?
Yes, they will have a big stack of beautiful balloons.
Okay.
But there's only one block on seventeen South, like, that, that they don't get lost. Uh, with the passing of work throughout Long Station, we have two of the, other than Pastor Banks, the oldest residents of, uh, Long Station, we don't know they're anymore. Uh, to celebrate with us. Along with that, we invite, uh, President Bobby Payne, of course, our Congressman, um, to come back.
Okay.
She'll be here.
She'll be here.
Over them today. So there'll be somebody else coming in, Jackson will, all of those who have clear understanding of April Randolph, what he represented, and how they're gonna have us getting forward.
Okay.
Being, I think, the Medici and I, I'm sorry, I'm all.
That's okay, you're fine.
The theme is signed to be the end of the journey. As you know, for the past ten to eleven years, we've been celebrating April Randolph in some capacity, using the brand of team. And the theme, because of all the people that are giving you the pass, it was called the journey. Well, the journey is coming to an end, to that being, and the end of the journey is now, we have a big view of the highway song. That speaks to all that we've done for the past ten to eleven years, however. April Randolph, of course, we've got started, April Randolph's sponsorship program, you know, works with, um, the state president. You might have had a chance to meet her, um, Miss, um, Kennedy.
I did. I bet, did she, I believe she came to the. Yeah, she did. She came up from Miami. Yeah.
And she's from Miami, and the state president, Miss Lovett. She probably will be no sad it also, but we carry April Randolph forward, but not just a name, we put her old sign in, so it's never old. Because he's still having so many people around the world, just doing things today. So we want to be an anchor for that, pushing it forward, inviting her to do other activities.
Okay.
Uh, after the sign ceremony, this, uh, installation ceremony, we try earth, it's gonna be very warm outside. So the volunteers, especially guests, to come back to the gallery where we have, um, light lunch, and we have a jazz band that was serving, now, show off, creating, but I'm coming. Of course, you've got all the friends you can imagine, um, during, yeah. That church is Union, that's the Lady Church.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was, I wanted to tell Angel something. Um, Angel, I think it's all very exciting, and I just wanted to let you know, on my phone, I attend the first Presbyterian church, the little one behind Baptist Church. We have a bell. We get out of church at ten. Our church is early. But I have already sent a message to our clerk and our pastor to let them know that you'll be contacting them.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's extremely exciting.
Yeah, thank you very much. The more bells and the time tomorrow, I received a phone call, someone wanted to, a recent article, I put in a comment, not as crazy. So can you imagine all the fucking time that's been given?
Let me ask you, how long do you want the bells to ring?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
She has the end of the Baptist church. So it's to ring for two minutes? Okay.
Okay, so tomorrow, I'll just send a email, let you know. Or, yeah, one, I lost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You take care of yourself. We appreciate you coming. Okay, with that, we mentioned some time ago, you want to go ahead and introduce, and you can start that?
We have, uh, McLaren is, uh, it makes a new representative, Mary Lou will be with us every week. She's an Interlocken resident. I'll let her introduce herself to you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Pickles. Um, as Mr. Rudd said, I live in Interlocken, so I will be kind of like your local representative for McLaren. Uh, I've spent, um, all day here trying to, you know, familiarize myself with everything, and, um, it's been a long day. Um, but briefly, about myself, I am retired. Uh, I was the Office Director of Financial Services at the Water Management District, St. John's in Placca, um, for over twenty-one years. I had different, different, uh, job titles, but my last one was the Director of Financial Services. Uh, previous to that, I was the Budget Director. So I have, um, a lot of familiarity with governmental budgeting and accounting. And I look forward to, uh, working with Mr. Rudd and his staff and, and helping him out.
Well, thank you. Welcome, welcome. We're excited to have you.
Yes.
Very excited. I know Charles is too. Very excited. And we're glad you're so close.
It's not a long drive, but it's definitely close. I think the first one before was like two and a half, three hours or something, which is yeah, at least an hour is a little doable.
Very, very appreciative. We're very appreciative. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I mentioned a couple of, um, actually, some time ago, that as we see citizens in, in the city doing things that are out of the ordinary, just taking their special time to do something. We've gotten, uh, a lot of incredible volunteers. Christina, with the partnership, I'm just so pleased with the amount of volunteers that show up week after week after week and the excitement that they have, and so we're forever grateful for them. But there was one lady that, um, stood out for me, um, several months ago. Lisa Roddenberry and I were, um, over at Dexter Park. I decided that we needed to paint that wall. And you know, when you stand there at Dexter Park and you look at that wall, it doesn't look too big. Um, that wall is
It's a mile long.
It's a mile long. It is a mile long. Like, we'll, we'll knock this out by noon, Lisa. So Lisa and I showed up there, paintbrushes in hand, and as I looked down, I'm like, Lisa, I think we gotta clean this thing first. Oh, and then we gotta sweep it, you know, so I had a little broom out there, and it was not a good broom either. It was just a regular broom. Well, we started on our endeavor, and in doing so, this little lady walked over to us and she said, so what are y'all doing today? Said, well, we're gonna try to paint this wall. And she saw me sweep a little bit, and she was out doing her morning walk. So she walks that park every day. She loves the sidewalks and, um, she, she loves to walk that park. And next thing I know, I set the broom down and went back to painting, and we were talking to her about her, her daughter and, and what she's been doing, and, and, uh, next thing I know, she picked up that broom. and next thing I know, she picked up that broom, and I tell you, she cleaned that wall, and she cleaned that sidewalk, so that Lisa and I just had to go in and paint it, and that's not an easy task, I did it this last week for those, um, students that were there painting it, and I have even more of an appreciation for her, so, Miss Emily, if you will step up here, we would like to recognize you today. So, Miss Emily, we can, we can, um, she swept that whole sidewalk, and it took you quite a while, didn't it? Quite, quite a while to do that, and I thought, surely she's gonna go a little way, that she might stop, she hit that whole sidewalk and that wall. And Lisa and I talked about her all day, how she made our job so much easier. And so with that, it is our pleasure to give you a certificate of appreciation, and City of Crescent City, we award Emily Williams for her dedication, for community spirit, and hard work towards making Crescent City the best. Watch the wires. I know, and, and we have to watch the wires, everybody, so as you come around here, just be careful, please don't step on the wire. And I'll tell you, she just didn't hesitate, as a matter of fact, she saw somebody walking along, and she encouraged them. And they said, no, no. And I don't know if you've ever seen her yard, but if, I'll tell you what, if anybody wants to see a beautiful yard with flowers and shrubs, she does a beautiful job in her yard. So, Miss Emily, we just so appreciate everything you do to make Crescent City the best.
Thank you. I'm listening, I want one radio, I hope you're ready to send out her answer.
So thank you, you know, and she just sets the examples for others to follow, so we thank her for coming out today, and, um, we just appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna open it up to Captain Asbury, if you wanna come forward and give us our charity board.
So we'll start off with our, uh, our event, that we had, cop did, I, uh, turned out very well, like, it was a very good event. Uh, turnout wasn't quite what it was yesterday. It wasn't quite, the turnout wasn't quite what it was last year, but it had a, uh, a very good event there, it was a very good time, I, I don't know that we had any complaints there, but it was a very awesome. I'll start off with a brief, as you'll see on the second page, there is a paragraph, I'm starting on the third page, there's a paragraph, sorry, fortunately, we put a paragraph there. That looks a little, a little deceiving, so I'll go to the first with the crimes, and then I'll talk about that, that graph, and what, and the difference between last, last month and this month, because we had no crime reported last month and five this month, so the big increase there is just a luckily single-digit number, and I'll have an answer for those as well. The first one we had, two and a half across that street, we had a vehicle burglary where a lady was observed on a rain cam going into a vehicle. We have since identified and charged Mary Lane, a cleric in Georgetown, for entering that vehicle, uh, and is waiting on the State Attorney's Office to, uh, finish up what they're gonna do on that case, and we've had the charges on the timeline, and that's up there. The second one was in two twenty-three North Summer Street, church recovery, it was a burglary again. Benny, you're familiar, Mr. Benny Norris was arrested with that. We've been having a little bit of trouble with Benny Norris lately, and I'm trying to look out for some other different resources for him. As you know, taking somebody to jail is, my, my, just a band-aid fits an issue. Benny's got some other issues that, some mental health issue, issues that we need to, we need to address. Right now, I'm trying to get the State Attorney's Office, but we worked another crime this month, the family was stolen by someone. We're working with the State Attorney's Office to try to revoke his bond, get him back in jail, we had a lot of mental health services in the jail, I think it will be a great benefit for him. I've reached out to several different resources, they don't seem to helpful, uh, or wanting to get involved, so I think this is probably gonna be my best course of action, I can think of. Major Scott Service here in jail has implemented a lot of the mental health programs that I think will be instrumental in his rehabilitation, so that's kind of where we are with Mr. Norris.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking about him like this today. The bicycle he has, is that his now?
No.
The bicycle he has now, is that his?
The green one?
Uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That is true. That's the one he originally had, and he gets, he leaves and he gets on foot, and he'll just, you know, get a ride in the town, and he just steals someone else's bicycle to get back, so. There's a lot of history that I have with Mr. Norris, I've had many conversations, we even had many conversations with the fam, the family, to try to find some type of a recourse, I've offered services out to them to get them to try to take charge of this, and it's been just a tough battle for me, so we're looking outside the box to try to get them some help.
Did you call, but, so, his sister, you got more one sister, but one is kind of concerned.
The sister and the mother, I have both, but I won't go into many, I really don't wanna go into detail publicly on where I've come in and out, but I have spoken to both of them about getting fixed now, and I've offered them some different resources, and I don't know if they reached out to the resources yet. The next one was a, a vehicle theft at nine fifteen Cedar Street, I won't say this individual's name, but this individual was involved in two of the crimes that are here, and one is, uh, the eight forty-nine, the vehicle burglary that's there is the same one in the vehicle theft. So gentleman leaves his car, the, the keys inside of the car unlocked, this gentleman found the opportunity, he gets into an altercation, but it opened here. He goes into Palacca, ends up trying to come back to reconcile, seeks refuge in a family member's house, they did not want him there, so when they got up and seen that he was there, he had a leak. Uh, it's the recent vehicle burglary happens a couple days before, when he goes to Palacca, he comes back, so now, he doesn't know where he goes, so he's gotta get back to Palacca. The car was stolen from, from, uh, from Cedar Street, and was since recovered in Palacca to one of his known, near one of his known associates' house. So, in my opinion, once I get some of the, the evidence off this car that was collected, hopefully we'll be able to identify this gentleman, and something like that, and we'll have a hundred percent solid ability to credit the crimes we're reporting. Any questions on those thus far?
I had to go there, Captain, I had to go there, pick that one up off of Cedar Street.
Yes, sir. I'm not in the shed in Palacca.
I don't know how you got it back there.
They're good hiding. They're good hiding.
Yeah.
And most of, most of the time, you can go to some of these places, and this is one of the locations that we commonly recover stolen vehicles, so they know where to hide these things, where they can get back to them.
Commissioner DeMille, you have a question?
Well, I had a question about Baja Taco.
Yeah.
Does this building need some kind of a grant for better security, because Baja Taco seems to be an incredibly frequent market?
It is, and lovely for Baja Taco, they, uh, I don't know how they do it, but every time someone has, they have been a victim of a crime, it has been solved. They have one of the best state-of-the-art camera systems that I have seen in Crescent City. Um, as a matter of fact, when this individual broke into the, the establishment, he actually broke into the bathroom first, but they didn't know where he was breaking into, if you don't know Baja Taco, you go into the bathroom, you can't go anywhere, you gotta break walls all the way around. So after he breaks into the bathroom, he comes, he crawls out of the bathroom window, one of the owners or workers of the business drives up. He runs behind the shed around back and hides. She leaves, he comes back out and breaks into Baja Taco again, because he's hungry. If you remember, in times past, this is three times they've broken into Baja Taco because they were hungry. The church burglaries that we've had, what was removed from the churches, food, so, you know, it's, again, I leave. Also, spending some of my time in the city of Palacca, I'm glad to come back to Crescent City, we can, we can, you know, we can solve crime, and it's, uh, it's, uh, you know, you'll have a lot of stuff, so. We've been very fortunate for doing that. Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, it's not about this page.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to the traffic crashes. At one crime, uh, sorry, three oh eight in Landall Street, there was a two vehicle crash with no injuries reported, appeared the car left the roadway and hit a car, was trying to make a U-turn in the grass there, and hit a car that was coming back off of Landall Street. Second one was at Summit and Lake Grove, a two vehicle crash with minor injuries, car pulled out in front of a motorcycle, was traveling south on Summer Street. Highway seventeen and Junction Road, it was raining really heavy this day, these two vehicles were traveling north into Crescent City, and just before they came up on that, the hill there in Crescent City, I say city, might as well just charge it a little further south. Uh, as they're coming up that hill, he notices that there's someone turning on the junction road, wasn't paying attention, runs off the road, and, uh, ends up hitting the trees there on the side of the hill to avoid, uh, a collision. And last but not least, Vernon Avenue and Grand Rondo, single vehicle crash with minor injuries. Elder lady, elderly lady was traveling, uh, westbound on January three oh eight, and where the road takes the, the turn out there at Grand Rondo, she just kept going straight. Single vehicle crash there. The next page you see here, it'll be general activities, the two twenty-nine, see, it's, uh, general calls for service, that's all calls in Crescent City, that's included in officer initiated as well. Traffic stops were a little low, so I have a meeting with the sergeants on this, I wanna bring these numbers up. Uh, so that number I was not happy with, and we should see an increase next month, and then traffic crashes, again, there were four traffic crashes, and the guys checked out with, uh, thirty suspicious vehicles, suspicious persons, so. Suspicious vehicle, the person went up, the traffic stops went down, so we should see an increase, I wasn't happy with that number, so we'll see an increase there next month. The semi-manual, semi-manual crime reports, you see, are really, the semi-manual is just like the last six months, they show you overall how crimes have been going. As you can see, because the numbers are so low for Crescent City, it looks, there's not really any consistency there. Uh, it's all up and down, as I, as I said before, we have zero reportable crimes, and when I say reportable crimes, crimes that are reported to the Department of Law and Order as to what crime they're having in Crescent City. Uh, zero actually, not, which is, um, heard of, called that, zero is never a month, unfortunately. We have some, some naysayers that want to commit criminal activity, so that number was five, so there wasn't drastic increase there. Any questions on those numbers? Yours says four, and the reason why I say that, I saw I stand corrected you, the burglary was miscounted. I had to add a burglary there, because when I pulled this report, it wasn't on there yet, so I had to add one, there was actually two burglaries, one vehicle theft, two thefts, which was a total of five, and I hear you're seeing four there, but you have to add one to burglary, to Baja, and the church that we're breaking into.
Okay. Maybe more questions?
Yeah, about, uh, Captain, about two months ago, maybe a month. Uh, I was coming back from the coffee break one morning, and a big dead cow was on the corner of Grand Rondo, as he getting ready to go around the lake, now, I don't know how in the world that big old cow got there. But he looked like he was wrapping around the pole.
Oh, that's Grand Rondo?
Yeah, right there, uh, call from Cobus Park.
Okay.
Red Country Street there. A cow. A huge cow.
It's a tremendous order, because I have no idea.
And I can't think of how nobody having no cow in that location inside the city, and I don't know where he came out of, sitting in there, I don't know whether it's by the broadening, or would it have gone from there? I, I really don't.
Somebody obviously picked him up from there.
Two of your cars was there.
Okay.
You, you didn't get no information on that?
Yes, sir, I'll have to do some research.
Yeah, please.
They probably didn't know what to do with it either.
Yeah, please do, because people were asking me. Huge cow, I mean, not, uh, he had to be at least five or six hundred pound of cow.
Did you have a card?
Normally, you see stuff like that, you would see root messages when the guys are on, on, on a personal social media website, you can see something like that normally, because that's, I don't know that I've ever driven up on this season dial myself, so I'll probably wanna share.
When I came back, first time, one deputy was there, and the next time I come by, deputy was, with a truck, was there.
Okay.
They took it home.
No, they didn't. They would have had to have a record.
Yeah.
Big, it was.
Wow, wow.
I'll look into that, and I'll get you an answer, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything.
Commissioner, Bert, you have something?
I do. Mr. Me, uh, along South Prospect and North Prospect. Uh, I've just received some complaints between Fridays and Saturdays. Uh, it doesn't really appear, uh, that we have deputies around, um, uh, the, the main complaints, uh, really, they go down towards Magnolia on the north side, and then, I think, down with Long Street on the south side, uh, where there's just, um, there's a lot of drag racing. I guess there's a lot of hurry somewhere down, I think it's Long Street, that area. There's, and I was, I'm not sure what they call, but, uh, was, I'm probably, but the, the sidecar, sidecar side racing. And different various people have brought this to my attention as well, that, you know, they've made calls, and I was the person that brought this to your attention once before as well. Um, but they're not getting any call back, they're not getting, um, they don't feel that there's anybody listening to them, letting them make these calls.
And I'm not making excuses, but I have had numerous emails just this week instead, and also,
Okay.
and also last week, um, about not returning phone calls. Actually, the undersheriff himself called me about one particular person, which is this person's not going to commissioners and playing. And what I found was, when I was calling these individuals back, one actually had me blocked, because they thought I was spam. So we are having a, it's a big challenge right now with all the spam calls, and my deputies, when they call a number back, they're usually using their personal cell phone number, and they're going to call you from a blocked number. So, that's a, that's an issue I'm gonna have to figure out, I'm getting a lot of calls about follow-ups going, and it's, this is just starting. I've been in this business for twenty years, and this is the first time I have the influx of, I, I, these people aren't calling me back, and my deputies are saying, yes, I am calling these people back. We use the star six seven, so maybe that is something that's happening, they're seeing a strange number, because it's not the sheriff's office number, or they're seeing a blocked number come through, and I know a lot of times, when I block a number, it literally was, I called my two, I've got two cell phones, one's my personal, one's my business. If I block my number from one cell phone to the other, it will say spam risk, if I block that number. So that's one of the challenges that we're running into. Uh, so, I'm not saying that that's an excuse, but that has been a big problem lately, a huge problem.
Well, maybe, maybe you can try and help, help you with that, I mean, there, there are certain numbers that you use to call back with, correct?
If they go back to
The challenge.
So if they go, if, if the deputy calls back into dispatch and gets a patch,
Okay.
that's very time consuming, so the deputy, a lot of times, will just use the star six seven, everybody knows that blocks your number, and they will call that person back. That person sees spam risk, only calling or an unknown number, they're most likely not gonna answer it, and most likely probably gonna be looking for a sheriff's office number if you call them back. So, uh, it's a, it's a challenge I have right now, so, um, my, my guys know that if they're told, if if a call comes in, they are either to go to that call, to where they're coming calling from, or if there's a number on that screen, they already be calling them back, they know that, that's a, that's a must. And so if I find out they're not, then we have an issue, but every time I've had the same thing happen, my deputies, giving your phone, this is one of the calls, this is the number I called back, I don't know why they didn't answer it. So, and I have had ones that said, I did. So, and I have had ones that said, I didn't call back, the truth was wrong, so I still didn't call them back, I didn't think about it, I got busy, okay, trying not to do it again. For about, I would say eighty percent of the deputies that I have, that they are able to show them on their phones where they tried to call, get complaints back, and they didn't answer that. Now, should they call two or three times, you know, it's, I, it's a challenge for me right now.
Okay.
So, we're working on that. Thank you.
Well, a peak hours, I guess those would be, would, what on, during the weekend do you consider the peak hours, probably?
As far as.
Well.
They depend on what it is.
I mean, do you have a consideration for what we would consider when we need two officer, our two deputies on, on, during the week, on, during the weekend? Is it Friday night, Saturday night? Just, it just depends, it just depends? I, I mean, I'm just, I just didn't know if that's something that, if, if they're not seeing them, um, you know, I mean, I.
There's an, there's an easy answer to that, I actually had a gentleman not long ago ask me about Reed Avenue, there's nobody here on Reed Avenue. Well, when I overrated A P L, it, it totally differently, so I have means to where, if somebody says their deputies aren't going to a certain place, I can show you.
Yeah, and, believe me, tell them that they're, that they're out there, I mean, but for whatever reason, they're just not. Especially with no callback, I think, they just don't feel it there.
So, if you have those individuals, you just give me a name and a phone number, send a quick email, give them to Charles, and I'll try to figure out, I'll check you out. But that is a big challenge for me right now, especially me, because I have so many people that, I mean, I'm not trying to blow my head, but I have so many people that want to talk to me. That it's, I've seen how much of a challenge it is, and my guys will express that to you. If you have a call, yes, I am, so.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner? Do you have anything?
No. Anyway, I do have a question to ask you about people who are on the streets. It seemed like for about the past two months, everywhere I looked. My husband and I live on South Main Street, right across from Eagle Lake Park, and going up to the coast office. There's, there's been a very unfortunate gentleman in a wheelchair living on the street, he's been to the hospital, they were trying, had a chat with the fire department about this. There was someone basically staying full time at the Evo during the day in Eagle Lake Park, yelling and screaming, I wonder if he was the person who broke into the church by any chance? He was very threatening, and I called a number of times. And then I've spoken to, and seen quite a few people who are pretty obviously homeless, just in this central area. In the last week, I haven't seen him for, the person in the wheelchair, for all I know, is deceased. But the other people that I'm not seeing, I'm wondering, is that because of contact with law enforcement, because y'all try to provide them services, or is it just happenstance that I'm not seeing them now?
We, the gentleman that's in the wheelchair, he is, has a very bad medical condition. And I have tried my best to get this gentleman to get a seat, some type of help, and he's just not having that.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with him, I bought him a meal, so I've had a conversation.
Is he the gentleman, is he the gentleman that was over, okay, now they did take him, because I did talk to, and new deputy called, took care of the medic, and they did take him to the hospital. And he was, they admitted him, they, they did admit him, and that was a couple, that was last week.
Oh, this has been multiple times.
Yeah, I know, he's gone multiple times, but I know he hasn't been back since.
Right.
And, so anyway.
And also, not to interrupt, but the other gentleman who talked about jailing the Evo.
Right.
Family members seek a margin act for him, he was taken into custody, he's cracked track, brought him over to Flagler Hospital for mental, for a mental evaluation. So, and I haven't seen him back around, so that may work, maybe I need some medication, get him back on the right track, or seeking some medical, or some, a mental, mental health assistance to, to get him back on the right track.
Because quite frankly, for about a week or two, when I and others would call, we got a lot of pushback from the deputy. I mean, they just basically told us, don't worry about it, you know, whatever, and it was pretty obvious to those of us in the area that he had some serious issues. So.
We knew that, but our problem was is that.
Right.
Yeah, they're vehicle, we had no reason to take his identification. He wasn't doing anything on the enrollment part, and we go out, so, once we were able to figure out his involvement and his work, and get some action taken, so it actually worked out in my, my school.
I'm glad it worked out, I'm glad to know that you did take it seriously, even though it did not appear that you did, because it was, whatever. And then there've been some other people who were very needy and obviously had problems, but I have no idea where they've been, but. There, there've just been quite a few, because you obviously are aware.
We respect our parts, and we keep trying to deter notorious, notorious activities, so.
Right, well, I mean, these, these people aren't necessarily, they're married, they have problems. So, anyway, just, thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
Okay, you have anything else?
Just, I wanted to say, I agree, there is a lot of partying, drag racing, particularly off of Grand Rondo. Sometimes like here at Saturday or even Sunday nights, I don't always call, I don't always have an opportunity to call. But on, I think I said this last week, but there is, there are quite a bit of what Commissioner Burton described. That, that followed up.
And with that, I'm gonna commend the captain, because we've had several residents that have come in here, and that they, they've been concerned about the traffic and the speed. I was, I was actually on a, on a mayor Zoom across the state, and that was, they said, their number one problem, all communities around the state, really around the nation right now are dealing with, is speeding. And trying to find solutions to that, another one, of course, is noise. But Captain, when he has gone to numerous homes, and he has sat with people with his radar. And very appreciative that you've taken that time out of your day, just to kind of help them, you know, better be, be able to better gauge actually what's speeding and what seems like speeding. A lot of these cars are loud and they sound like it, I mean, I live on the backside of Summit, so I hear them, you know, constantly in my back, you know, in the backyard, and so does Commissioner Burton, she lives right off of Summit also. And it's, it's, you know, you, but sometimes they're just loud, and it just say, you think they're speeding, and actually they're not. But I just want to commend you and thank you for taking that time and, and just being respectful of the concerns that the residents have, it means a tremendous amount.
And we are, we're trying our best to educate these people with these loud exhausts, especially modified, because modified and, and stock exhausts are different. But as you, as everyone knows, these high performance vehicles that we're doing these days, they come with loud exhausts, just like we hear in most automobile numbers. That is from the manufacturer, that is to the manufacturer's specs. And when they take off from these red lights, they sound like they are tearing the roads up, but in reality, they're doing the speed limit, but it sounds like a riff. So, it's, it's challenging, but we're, we're working on how, our problems should act.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay. With that, we're good. Okay, now we're gonna move into public comments, so at this time, I'm gonna open up public comments, if we have any public comments from the audience. You have three minutes, please come up, state your name, state your address, speak into the mic, and please address the commissioner, not the audience.
I can't remember all of them.
I know, it's hard for me to remember just to say it.
My name is Rick Ryder, lived at four thirty six South Prospect Street. McDonald's aisle is right in the middle of all this stuff that I was discussing, I felt like it was appropriate to kind of get up here right after what he said. Because I had experienced last Saturday morning at two thirty, where I did have an officer talk about. Very professional and kind of gave me their input on why we can't seem to get a handle on the noise here in town. I, I let things go until midnight, but I've learned over the last two years, in the twenty plus times that my family has called, you know, the Crescent City Police, or the Sheriff's Department. To report excessive noise, and if I don't start early, the chances of getting that resolved are slim to none. So, the deputy went by and notified these folks that it's too loud. And, and this is a situation where people are playing their stereo outside, this noise is not coming from inside, it's coming from outside. And then when they decide to get onto their public address system and start screaming, that just intensifies the situation. So, three times, the deputy went out there to inform these folks that the music is too loud. I finally passed out from exhaustion at like three thirty or four o'clock in the morning, and the music was still going. Now, we have an ordinance. That, you know, in the time I've been here, I've heard every reason in the world why this isn't being enforced. But today, I can tell you that the mechanism to address this is not, is not there. And I don't know what it's gonna take to finally get, I don't want a personal access, but yeah, I've got to do something to move on this. I mean, I'm really to the point where I'm ready to put my house on the market and leave here. Because this happens, I can set my watch on when this is gonna happen. And, you know, I, I, I don't, I'm, I'm just exasperated. That I live here, and I pay taxes, and on top of those taxes, I pay an enhanced fee for law enforcement services, and, and they're handcuffed around enforcing. And being punitive toward people to help them understand that in a civilized society, your rights to play your music so loud do not. Override the rights of somebody else in the community to be able to have peace and quiet and order sleep.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Mr. Vench, you'll remember this, when we were working on this ordinance, the problem was, when working with the Sheriff's Department and our police department. Is we could not. Measure the decibels, and we could not enforce it, do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
And I've always found that odd, because if it's too loud, too loud is too loud. I agree, we shouldn't be able to say you can't do that, or you have to move to somewhere else, or whatever. But it, I'll tell you what, with our lake, this little lake back here, Lake Stella particularly, if it's happening over there, I'm hearing it upstairs in my house, because that water amplifies it. So, it's all over the town, and we should, Captain, I'm sorry, is there any way or any way to add that to that ordinance? Specific sound level.
I'm gonna ask you, just if you'll wait, just admit, you'll step aside and ask Captain.
Right.
If he wants, if you'll.
Because that, that's been the bugaboo in the ordinance, and it's never been able to be. Enforceable because of that, measuring decibels and.
So, we do, so we do have a decimal meter, it is stationed at the Crescent City Office, the weekend that this happened, it was not, because I, I had an opposition. Going around town and seeing what the decimal levels actually sounded like, so they got, the deputies, when they hang on, got a general knowledge, and said, okay. I need to, I need the decimal meter, instead of coming all the way up here and getting it, because if they take it anywhere else, Crescent City's fine. But if they have to go to East Palack, they gotta come all the way down to Crescent City and come back up there, so they can kind of be a judge before coming down and getting the meter. So, secondly, speaking on the noise levels itself, we have been spending a pretty good amount of time, I've been spoken to you about it somewhere, trying to figure out the right process. And I don't want to spill the beans, and if somebody will have to have some private conversations on this, I don't want to spill the beans of how, how that, that process actually works right now. We can't issue citations, but we're working on, we're working on the process. And I, I really don't want to go into a whole lot of meat and potatoes of that right now, just because I don't want. Everybody to know kind of the way the process works right now, so. Once we, because we're not sure how this is gonna go, so once we come up with a, a good plan of enforcement, then we'll, obviously, well, obviously, it's a problem to us in more. I've also been in contact with the courthouse, with the powers to be, to figure out who's gonna be regulating these citations and what that process is, so. We're on it, I was hoping to have that completed by this week, which is been a busy week, you know, reading paper, we've got a couple of things happening that were unfortunate, and it's took up a lot of my time. So, it's, it's personal, my priority right now for Crescent City to figure out a process to, to cite, manage, whatever you want to call it, amplify sound in Crescent City.
Well, that's good news, because we've been battling this for years.
Yeah.
And it's just not right.
And, and as I was, I was speaking to, to the gentleman here, I have been dealing with this for twenty years, so, and it's been the same thing.
Yes.
And it's time to get it fixed, I think there's a way around it.
All right, excellent, thank you, Ben.
Kind of picking back off Commissioner West, who, we've been having that problem in Crescent for years. And we even had the state's attorney office searching for answers, and they couldn't come up with a, a good answer. And it looked like the problem is still laying in, in automobiles, or where we, it kind of judged by the automobile, but in an individual house. Playing loud music, it couldn't come up with the judge, the automobile, the time they see the star come, the police car come, they cut it off.
Right.
Time he get back down the road, boom.
Back up.
There you go again. It, it was kind of hard, but, but the, the community just was upset about that.
Right, and again.
And we were trying to do everything possible, everything possible, they kind of get a answer for us.
But we could not get the law, a law anywhere that would help us. So, I'm not trying to say we can't do anything about it, it's been something, I'm really hoping whatever you're working on works.
I think it will, and like I said, we are handing out citations with a band-aid.
Right.
What happens after that citation is, is what we're judged by, and you are, just like I am, you're people of accountability. When we go issue that citation, I want to make sure they're accountable for those actions, so that's what I'm working on, is not just the citation part, not just the band-aid part, but accountability.
Thank you. And I, I live just right down the road from Mr. Ryder, and so I know exactly which house he's talking about, and I get phone calls from neighbors. I don't wait till midnight, I start at ten o'clock, you know, it's time to start making phone calls, start at ten o'clock, and I figure after ten o'clock, kind of like you shouldn't have that phone call up for nine o'clock. After ten o'clock, that music should shut down, but, you know, I spoke to Mayor, Mayor Watts. Over in Llacka, and they are currently working on their ordinance, and something, and, and that was the big question, is where do you put, you know, what kind of teeth are you putting in this ordinance? So that people will understand that they just can't do this and get a citation, that this is gonna really impact them if they continue. And so, he's, he shared some things with me, and I know as we go forward, and we have kicked this can down the road quite a bit, I know, as far as, I've had the noise ordinance sitting on my desk. For some time, and so maybe now's the time that, that we workshop it, or, or we move forward and figure out some way to do this. We had a gentleman that's right outside in the county, and he came in the office the other day, and just like Mr. Ryder, he is just exasperated, and he is talking to anybody. He's even talked to Mayor, Mayor Watts, I don't know why people are calling him Mayor West, but Mayor Watts. And I said, well, Llacka's a long ways, he's south of Crescent, that's a long ways away, because I'm gonna talk to anybody that will help me, we've been dealing with this. And so, it's, it's all over, and I know the county struggles with it as well, as far as trying to figure this out, but thank you for bringing this to our attention. Once again, and I think he's right, we need to, we need to start, we need to figure this out.
Put some teeth in it.
Put some teeth in it.
We need a way to be able to give some consequences, and so far, we haven't been able to have that, because I know our ordinance is after eleven o'clock, is it? And so far, we haven't been able to have that, because I know our ordinance is after eleven o'clock, is it? Ten, ten, it's supposed to go down or off, but nobody pays any attention to that.
Well, like I said, I can, I may, I'm an amateur version, so if this is, obviously, I was a little bit later today, because I was in town a little bit too much today. But tomorrow, we'll be planning down, uh, most of the day. We'll be paying this gentleman, this residence, a visit tomorrow. There are not, listen, the sound ordinance is not the only trick we have at our sleep, folks. These people still have to come and go from this house, and there's some other things that, some some other things that we can do to deter this type of activity. So, just give us the opportunity, I mean, work with everybody here to try to come up with a, a solution to citations. And.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also had a four-wheeler at that house the other day, and I'm really scared of him, because I stood across the street pointing my finger at him. And he parked it until I drove away. Right back on him, has my finger, has that mother finger, you know? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening, this is Thomas, Nineteenth Seater Street. And if we don't give up on this problem, I had the same problem at my house, and I know exactly the house that is doing it, is I told my husband, the shed transforms into a baby seat, and the speakers are out. And I told him, we need to call early, because last time it was midnight and they were still blowing. When I cannot sleep, and the noises inside my room, I know is too loud. We cannot give up, we have to train them like dogs, that does not allow. And don't give up, sir, don't give up, I'm not giving up, share it, don't give up. The problem is that we have all these children in the midst of these parties, and like McDonald's or Walmart, we are creating the next generation that thinks it's okay to do these things. So, we need to show up and let them know you invading my privacy, you know? When your noise is coming inside my room, you violating my privacy. Would I get arrested if I get a blow horn and just blow it at their ears? I don't know, my husband told me, stay good, just go to bed and I'll continue with it.
I have thought the same thing.
But don't give up, everybody, let's train them.
Thank you very much.
Well, I've wondered if it's not a commercial enterprise that's going on over there, waiting there to march number three.
Yes.
I am excited to hear your response, Matt.
I was wondering, when are we gonna meet our officers? We're gonna have a meeting of officers that we could, you know, by your office.
Colonel Wells, Colonel Wells was here, and, and he, he, he did, he did say that we would do that. And we were looking at doing it in June sometime. I know you've had, you've kind of had to playful a little bit, and with some of the switching and the changing that's been going on. So, he did, he did say that we would have an open house, when you had it all ready to go, so. We'll work on that, we'll do the date. Thank you.
Veronica Glode five twelve Grand Avenue. Um, about the noise ordinance, I know that sometimes with certain activities and events, it can be annoying, especially, but I'm hoping that we can have a workshop, so we can define times and the different types of functions that we're, we're having. So, people would know what, but I, I know what you're talking about. With some people, it is just, just ridiculous. But I think that we should have a workshop and talk about it, how it's going to be handled, how it's gonna be handled, because I don't want to think that, okay, if I'm having a function at my home, and I have the music on, and then all of a sudden, the police show up and I'm getting a citation. So, I, I just want to make sure I'm just playing my music, and it's not too loud, but I just want us to be able to define that for the residents.
Ms. Glode, excuse me, when we were working on this ordinance, this was something that came, like, you know, I have, you're having a party, I'm having a party, whatever, you don't have music that is gonna be infringing on your neighbors. I think it's the hour, anything that goes after ten o'clock is really obnoxious. And that's the biggest problem, is how long, because these people are going all night long.
And I do, I understand that, I, I, I really, I know what he's talking about.
Right.
Everybody else, because I live there, and sometime my windows, the cars pass by, they just, they just rattle it through windows. So, I do understand that, it, it is, can be frustrating.
But if you're having a party at your house, and you're having music that's loud, louder than you would have inside, I don't think that's going to be a problem, I think we all understand. But after nine o'clock, ten o'clock, you know that it's, it's late, people go to bed, they need their sleep, they get up at five in the morning, go to work, or whatever, and that's not a good thing.
Right, and I, you know, but I just don't want nobody to say, well, she had a party over there, they didn't say nothing to her or him, and, you know, so we can just be able to define what.
Well, that's what I've been talking about, we've had a very difficult time putting, what is the limit, how do we measure it, and then what do we do about it? That's been the problem from here to Tallahassee.
Right, and I, and I'm aware of that also, all those years, and then to hear one time that there is no noise ordinance, and I'm like, what?
There is, it just doesn't have teeth, it doesn't have teeth, that's right.
But absolutely, thank you, and we'll make sure that there is a workshop on this. Okay, any other public comment? And audience, I'm gonna ask you, that if you have a comment, please come forward, and, and we're not, don't speak out in, in the audience, that's just kind of, it's hard for us up here, but if you'll do that for your neighbor, and, but if you do have a comment, please, by all means, come up and, and speak, now's the time. Do they have anything else? Everything good? Okay. With that, I'm gonna close public comments. And we're gonna open up public hearings. We've got the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two oh four. Bobby?
This is an ordinance of the city commission of city and Crescent City, we're amending the city of Crescent City's comprehensive plans to incorporate changes. Yeah. Change recommended by the evaluation and approval review, amending the comprehensive plan by adopting the evaluation and approval review amendments, adopting private property rights element, amending the tax permit, solar facilities and agricultural, and replacing the interranging maps, providing for conflict, providing for ratification of fire asks, providing for complication and, this is providing for separability and providing for non-effectivity. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of the update to our comprehensive plan. Upon first reading, per acceptance, it was transmitted to the state agencies for review. There were no complaints from the state, so it's come back for reapproval on second.
With that, I'm gonna go ahead, and I'm gonna open it up for additional factual testimony, for or against, if we have any. Seeing none, I'm opening up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on, on this, is our comp plan amendment? I mean, I'm sorry, our update. Does anybody have any public comment on this? We had a workshop on it the other day, a very good workshop, very good explanation as to why we go, why we have a comp plan, and why we have to do the update every seven years. So, it's an evaluation and review. Anybody have, okay, seeing none? I'm gonna close public comment. Commissioners, I'm bringing it back to you. We have a motion.
I'd say move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, Karen, you got the second?
They both said it at the same time.
Okay. Okay, so. Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Burton, second, commissioners, do we have any? Open this up for any comments and discussion, if we have any? If not, yes.
I have a couple of questions, and one for Mr. Pickden.
Yes.
Okay, so, this is a very long document, it's a hundred and four pages. Before first reading, I went through the entire thing and asked all my questions. It was sent to the state for review. One thing that I noted in our informational workshop is the future land use map, which does not have page number, says Crescent City twenty twenty-five. It is almost illegible if there's a larger future land use map that we need. So, my concern is the whereas clauses to this ordinance say that this is it, whatever was there in the past, this replaces it. This is just a completely unreadable map, it's got the date and the source on it. Well, actually.
This is a map that was sent to the state, correct, and they reviewed this, so they've already reviewed that?
It's a electronic copy that you could zoom in on and inspect.
Okay, so this is the twenty twenty-one map.
Should have been the December twenty twenty-one, should have been that one, is that what it says?
Right, so, I mean, there's a better copy of this.
There is.
And it is a electronic copy, it sounds like.
Yeah.
And you have a better copy at the workshop the other day, too, you had a larger copy, you had an enlarged copy, right? Yes, you had that the other day.
Saying, so.
So.
This is what, a rep, this was representative of the actual map, this won't be taken for the actual map, because.
Right, that fits in your package, the other map, it didn't.
So, you're saying we actually will put a better copy of the map in the ordinance that's adopted.
We can print a larger version of it.
The two copies, okay. And then, the other thing is, just a hundred and four pages, we got this packet last Friday, with everything else in the package, there's no way to go through here and make sure that it matches what we sent to Tallahassee. Can you represent to me that this is identical to what we sent to Tallahassee?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any other comments? You, yes, sir. I'm so sorry, go ahead, if you'll introduce yourself for everybody, sorry.
Robert Jordan, I'm a member of the Northeast Florida Regional Council, and I assisted the city with this year of a Commissioner DeVito on the map, this, this is just what we, the city has, it's a very large document, this is a huge map. And I will be sending that map that I sent to the state, which was that larger version, to the state for adoption. So, it's not gonna be that map that will be sent.
That's good to hear, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And the one that we had at the workshop the other day was very legitimate.
Eleven by seventy.
Yeah. Any other comments? Anything good? With that, we have a motion, and we have a second. So, all in favor of this adoption, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion here. Want to go to the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash, thank you so much, and thanks for coming over. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
The second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Mary, I have to ask that we table this, this I have, I noticed that in your packet, you received a copy, that was your first reading, did not contain the changes you approved, and you were sending to you for approval.
Okay.
So, Will, my request is we table this up, while you do that, I've got a copy of that, with the highlighted the changes. There were few changes, but there were changes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, you guys table this, I need a motion to table this, please.
I move that we table twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Okay.
Until we get a copy with new change.
And do we have a second?
I second you.
We have a motion, we have a second, do we have any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this, are we gonna table it till the next meeting?
Till July.
Till the July, till the July general mission meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna go to the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
An ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida approving amendment to the natural gas fund of the budget for the fiscal year, beginning October first twenty twenty-one and ending September thirty of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Mayor, this is the second and final reading of an amendment that adds the DOT grant for the moving of our gas line for expansion of the S seventeen.
Okay, and that's down by Dunn, the one that's down by towards Dunn Creek, in that area, okay. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for additional factual testimony, for or against. Seeing none, do we have any public input on this? I'm gonna close public comments, commissioners, we have a motion.
I move that we approve the second reading.
I'll second, okay. We have a motion for adoption, and a second, do we have any other discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay. We're gonna move to the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. No, I'm sorry, we're gonna do thirteen, we're gonna do thirteen, sorry. We're gonna do thirteen.
An ordinance of the city of Crescent City, Florida providing more, or a second city commission meeting each month as necessary, providing for the procedures to call for a second commission meeting, providing for conflicts, providing for the complication, and directions to the code of fire, providing an effective date. Mayor, this is an ordinance that the commission voted for us to bring to you in contemplating a second regularly scheduled meeting for the month. It did pass three to two, I think it was, I felt like it was shaky, three to two. So, there's been a lot of discussion, the way the ordinance is actually written, I feel like it, it enforce what we already can do, just to call special meetings, we want a second meeting of the month. So, and we can accomplish what we potentially want, is to schedule a regular meeting, we have two scheduled meetings a month. But I'm not sure that's actually the will of the commission, so don't pass this, and I have the saw the ability to call a special meeting. It'd be a second meeting every month. Emergency meeting. This, this ordinance that presented would essentially allow you to, the mayor, to schedule a second meeting, if needed.
So, we have some, so we have some options that we can fill it open, because this, we already have that, basically, that opportunity to call that special meeting, should we need it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna open it up right now for public, for additional factual testimony, for or against, seeing none, I'm opening it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this, as far as us having it would be on the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday of every month, we would have, that's where we would have the other meeting, so do we have any comments?
I am excited for Chestnut Street. I'm afraid if we had a second meeting, it would just end up being a second marathon meeting. Because we don't have the ability to.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments? Seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna close the public comment section. And, and that has been discussed, thank you for sharing that, because it would be, so then we would have maybe two long meetings. I. Commissioners, do we have a, a motion, and then we can have some discussion, or do we just want to go ahead and have some discussion first, before we?
Why don't we just have discussion?
Let's have some discussion about this.
Can I just jump in? It says, for a second city commission meeting each month as necessary. It doesn't mean we have to schedule it, I keep thinking we're gonna get to the spot where we've gotten. So, I think our new manager is just fantastic, by the way, but he's really doing a lot that catch up, all right? I keep thinking we're gonna get caught up eventually, and maybe not need that second meeting, what do you think? Or do you think?
I think it'll be a while. We just had a noise ordinance to the last night.
Yeah.
We, we, budget season coming up, so at least for the next three months.
It's brutal, right?
Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, but we got to look at it more than one way, too. We got to look at it financially. Way, uh, you know, when we have it, we got to have a turn into impact. Keep things straight. So, we got to look at it that way, then we got to look at
City workers.
City workers have to come in for their time. Our time. We got to look at, so, I think we've been getting the business deal, and maybe we just need not to get on a controversy and stay there. Yeah, but we get on the conversation if we stay there too long.
I mean, we had that, we, we talked about that. We did discuss that, and, and often with Robert's rules on each item, you know, you can limit the amount of time a, a commissioner can speak on an item. And so, we have that opportunity to do two, to do that as well. But if we wanted to limit it to five minutes.
Why don't we, we've got three minutes for the audience, do five minutes for commissioners now. Is that per item or total?
Per item. Okay, that would be.
Five, five minutes should be plenty of time.
Right. Plenty of time.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, I mean, it's just like the night, um, things like this happen, it seems like, all the time. The second reading on the ordinance of twenty twenty two eleven was taken because we didn't write it up right, you know? And basically, this first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two thirteen really is not written up the way that we had discussed, written up on the third, the Tuesday, the Thursday, and everything. I, I guess what I want to say is, we can't get the first meeting right. So, why don't we try to focus on that first? You know, try and get the first meeting, the Tuesday meeting right. And, um, and if we, what this says, if we need another meeting that's necessary, we can have a special meeting. We don't really need to write it, and.
We have that ability.
We have that ability, we have that ability now. And by doing so, that Charles can come to the mayor, and the mayor can call a special meeting, or the three commissioners can request that special meeting. It would have to be the three commissioners. So, we have that ability, we do have that ability currently without having to adopt a new ordinance. So, yes, Commissioner DeVito?
Sure, um, I agree, but I think, um, potentially by doing that, and, you know. Thank you. I agree that the way to do this is not just to have another meeting. I put some thoughts on paper that I handed out to everyone. I gave it to Karen, it's in the record. I think Commissioner Banks has an excellent point when he says that there is a time and money cost and staff to holding a second meeting. We have a small staff, and I think that just putting these things to a second meeting would be digging myself another hole. I mean, that's a time head. What I see is that, you know, we talked about this when Mr. Redd first came on board. Mr. Redd can do a tremendous amount of work. Um, and he's a very hard worker. But we talked about, um, setting some priorities. We did a strategic plan. We're a new team here, but I think that we need to keep reviewing our strategic plan to make sure that an item that is brought to the commission is not a vice to do, that it's a must do, that it's on the strategic plan. Make sure that we have all the information, that an item's ready to be heard. One thing I've asked, uh, the staff is that, the meetings are where commissioners have the only opportunity under the sunshine law to talk. It is very important that the staff, whatever staff are involved, whether it's code, returning of the city manager, public works, that they get together and cash out all the details before it comes before us. And as well, there's a couple of other items in here. But I really think that if we do some of these things and try to create those efficiencies, that we can save ourselves time and do that as well. So, I'm, I'm just in agreement, all of you, and, uh, I encourage us to look at the list. So, thank you.
Okay. So, we have an option here. We can go ahead and, and we have to vote, we have to deny this if we, so we're going to have to deny it, so.
Well, we don't have a motion.
Yeah, we don't have a, I don't have a motion, so nobody's going to make a die for lack of a motion, we could do that. I personally, and, um, I don't want to go to us, another Thursday, simply because I, I already have, that would be my third Thursday that I'm tied up because I have one, um, another that I have to do. So, I am, I mean, I, I personally am, am with that. But at the same time, I'm going to ask the commission, and as the chair here, I'm going to ask you to be accountable of everybody's time. And, um, we recommended the five minutes. Maybe we don't need to do that at this time. But, um, again, as the chair, I'm going to ask you to be accountable. And if we're not going to be accountable, then we will have to do something from a time standpoint. Because we have audience here, too, and they have items that they want to hear, that they're interested in. And so, if we spend so much time, like Commissioner Banks said, um, you know, they want to get home, they want to get home, too. So, I just ask y'all that if this is going to die for lack of emotion, that we be cognizant of everyone's time and respectful. And, um, okay.
Mayor, there's one more thing I would like to say, but that was the first thing I thought of when we talked about second meeting. Before I ever served on the commission, there are some people who are regular attendees here. I was a very regular attendee, and in addition to our time, and you've mentioned there are other meetings for people who want to keep up with what's going on in the city. It's very hard on them if they have to attend two meetings a month as well as any other board meetings that they would be interested in. So, it's all of our time, and particularly for public.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? A motion, a motion. We don't have a motion, it's going to die for lack of, die for lack of emotion. Die for lack of emotion. Okay. We're going to move on. Now, we're going to move on to first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash fourteen.
To the city of Crescent City, Florida, approving the renewal of lease, but at least with the women's club, this Crescent City, where the property described as six oh two North Summit Street, Crescent City, for also managing Little Blue House and providing an effective date. Mayor, this is, uh, last minute you approved renewing the lease, and then we subsequently discovered that that lease was done by ordinance and requires another ordinance to renew it. We have written the new language such that in the future, it can be done by resolution. But meanwhile, we need to do two readings of an ordinance to approve the lease. And there is an error in there, we discovered the address, I think it's different, I'll leave it. Ordinance versus the lease.
I emailed you. Yeah, one says six oh two, and one says six oh four. But it's a big lot, so I don't know if it makes any difference.
It should be six oh four. Six oh, if they're not.
It's twice, it's six oh two, so.
We can approve with them, yeah.
Second reading of, that change will be made at second reading?
Yes.
Alright, good, okay. At this time, I'm going to ask if we have additional factual testimony for or against. We, and then come forward, do we have any public input on this? Public input, I'm going to close public input at this time. Commissioners, I'm bringing it back to you, do we have a motion?
I say move it. We have approved ordinance twenty twenty four fourteen, the Little Blue House to the women's club.
I second you.
Motion and a second, Commissioners, do we have any further discussion?
Yeah.
Good thing.
This ordinance, um, just kind of reading it. It said, where's the city, Crescent City, city. Florida has agreed to lease the premises on this Little Blue House since, uh, since we moved on Summit Street, for the sole purpose of being able to provide property insurance for the structure at the location. It doesn't really say who's coming for the sole, it, it says for the sole purpose of being able to provide property insurance for the structure at the location. And then, I guess, the lease, lease agreement on the next page kind of defines us. But it really doesn't define it in the ordinance as being, um, the, uh, we see. So, shall be provided here from the date. We'll keep the building and premises insured against casualties. So, I don't know, it just seems kind of vague, that state, it's just a statement of doing that for, so just, I just need an explanation, I mean, why would we put such a vague statement in there?
So, this, I actually didn't draft this one. This is just a copy of the ordinance that was done prior to, but if that's a change that you want me to clarify about, that's sort of, I understand.
I mean, is this, is this ordinance going away? This ordinance twenty twenty two fourteen going away, and you just.
Next time it'll be new, it'll be a resolution solution. But this will be in effect for the next five years.
With this ordinance?
Yes.
I don't know, I may not understand what I'm trying to say, you're just kind of, okay? It doesn't say. It actually takes itself up, but it doesn't assign anything to.
The more lease detail in the whereas clause.
I, I, I mean, if we don't need that, I suppose it's all right, but it just seems kind of
They're going to return it, could switch it.
Yeah, I think.
That's all right, it just seems kind of vague.
Come back on the separate reason.
Though where?
I mean, we don't need it, that's fine. I just.
Sorry, just so we're on the same, that you want to be aware of how long we're leasing it for, and more specifically, what we're leasing.
No, I just, I mean, I see the lease agreement here, and the lease agreement says, I guess, what I, what, what I think the ordinance should say. And so, if you're going to sign the ordinance and then sign the lease agreement, right? The lease agreement will do what? I'm suggesting we
We can, we can put a five clause here in the lease agreement as our whereas clause.
Yeah, so right now, we have, so what we have, what we have basically is an ordinance saying that we're going to enter into a lease agreement with the women's club, the Little Blue House. And then, we have the actual lease. And so, I guess, Commissioner Burton, you're asking that everything that's in that lease, those five, those five, um.
Well, let me, let me just redo this. You guys agreed to the release of the premises on this Little Blue House for the sole purpose of being able to provide property insurance for the structure at the location. It, it's I guess it's, I, I guess it's okay.
I would say, I'm assuming how that came is
I guess it's okay.
Is, I don't know, because, I mean, I will, obviously, I wasn't here, but I'm assuming what happened is that's one of the reasons that even the women's club wanted the city to lease it so they would provide the insurance for the building, because I know we do pay for the insurance. I think that's where that came from, but I can't clarify that additionally.
It doesn't really kind of clarify, but this does clarify. So, I mean, the lease, the actual lease agreement clarified that that's wrong.
We'll have that in place for five years.
Okay.
And the lease agreement is the contract that we will actually have in the ordinance. At least that's what we have between the women's club, okay?
Yes, the ordinance is just giving the city permission to
Commissioner DeVito? Yeah, Commissioner DeVito? Uh, did you have a question?
I do, I have a question, and a comment. So, just I may be forgetting the way things work. I thought that we made all the changes on first reading, and that we had to, uh, pass the identical item on second reading that we passed on first reading. Am I mistaken about that?
Yes, yes. You make changes when you have to advertise and make available to the public ten days prior to the adoption of the final version of ordinance. So, you can make changes with changes to be brought back to second reading.
But that's what I'm saying, don't we usually amend the, whatever it is we're passing on first reading?
We change it, yeah. But this is the first reading. That's what we're doing right now. Okay, we're changing, making any changes that we feel need to be necessary. That's what Commissioner Burton was just going through, is that she.
But I'm not talking about what Commissioner Burton's comments. I thought I heard Bobby or Charles say you would make the change at second reading.
Well, for, to be read at second reading.
Be read, okay.
So, we're amending it today?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then that, that wasn't clear. And then, just, um, I think, uh, should we register? Who is an officer with the women's club spoke to this at our last meeting, I think it's in the minute. And, uh, we were asking what the history of it was, and she said, the city actually came to the women's club and asked them to take responsibility for the Little Blue House in terms of the other items in the lease. You know, taking care of the day-to-day things, keeping it open as a museum, blah, blah. And then, the insurance is the city's. That was, um, just to refresh.
Okay. Um, for, just for clarification purposes, I know that we've got this date, but six oh four is present, the women's club. So, the women's club is not actually, they're located at a different address than the, um, Little Blue House. So, by and between Crescent City, Women's Club, six oh four North Summit Street, that's in the actual lease agreement. So, it is the six oh four and not.
And then the house, Little Blue House is the six oh two.
Six oh two.
Okay.
House itself, Little Blue.
Yeah, so, I'm just wondering, because the women's club, that's, that's, it would be based on, um, the way the lease reads, Bobby, it's by and between Crescent City, Women's Club, six oh four North Summit Street. So, you would be giving their actual mailing address, but the physical address of the Little Blue House might, might obviously be six oh two.
Yeah.
It's, it's, so the ordinance does read correct.
Yes.
At the six oh two, yeah. So, the ordinance does read correct at six oh two.
The women's club is right next to it, right?
Yeah.
It's combined, now, there's no six oh two.
Okay, so they did away with six oh two, okay.
It's a combined.
So, it used to probably be six oh two.
It probably was at the time, and the ordinance was just copied, and then made sense combined, of course. There's no, because they're, on the north end of the women's club is six ten, and on the south side, Center State Bank is the building was moved there, it doesn't have an address.
Right, but it, it should have had an address at that. And when they moved it, they should have, they should have given it, assigned it an address. Just, we'll just get that clarified for our second reading, just to make sure that we've got all our addresses right.
One more little tick, okay? On the lease agreement number one, where it says Little Blue House, okay, and the little blue?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I just always want to say, I am a member of the Crescent City women's club.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. You're not an officer, though, correct?
No.
Okay. Okay, seeing we have no more discussion, all in favor, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving this on the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I would say nay.
Mayor, don't we have to say, would the address change?
With the necessary corrections? I want to add that to your motion, who made the, who made the actual motion?
Commissioner West, maybe.
Commissioner West.
Alright. I move that, uh, we accept ordinance twenty two two, uh, twenty twenty two fourteen, the new rule on the lease of Little Blue House with the corrections.
I'll say.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Charles, we have pulled item, um, ordinance twenty twenty two dash fifteen, correct?
Yes, we have a title, so we did note that we pulled it and discovered that they changed a retention to make in our election rules, it's actually in the city charter. So, we can't change it. We do have to pass an ordinance, and they want to change it, but then it goes to referendum of general, of general election, so.
Okay. Bobby, um, if Bobby, and, just a second, and Bobby, if you want to kind of give us an overview for, for anybody, I know there's that people, you know, and, and trying to be very transparent with this.
Yeah, so, how this all came about is I was actually sitting here in, I was in March commission meeting, Charles over to her, emailing me. Yeah, so, how this all came about is I was actually sitting here in, I was in March, Commissioner, Charles Overturk emailed me and asked me to interpret the city ordinance fourteen dash oh four, and in that ordinance, it sets out a timeframe for the qualifications of the offices within the city of Crescent City, and in that ordinance, it says that the qualification period is only from noon on the first Monday in August, and ending at noon on the following Friday in the year of qualifying for the election. So I told him that I felt like he could give out the information, but it could not be turned in only but that one week, from noon Monday to noon Friday. Then, so that's what we were gonna do, we were gonna take the front bookend off where people could qualify for city elections at any time they wanted to, if somebody wanted to run uh, for offices tiers out, that they would be able to qualify whenever they wanted to. So then, we started drafting the ordinance to take the front bookend off, and we discovered that it was in the charter, so we couldn't just do it by ordinance. Then recently, I, and I'll preface this way, I don't have a lot of the election experience or anything like that, I didn't realize that there were more documents that you had to turn in on a state level than just what the city asked for, so then it was brought to my attention by, um, Commissioner De Vito, that there is a form, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's D S D nine, which allows a candidate to open a campaign account, appoint a treasurer, spend money, and raise money, um. So then, we had a conversation about that, and I have made a legal recommendation that our city charter does not contemplate the financial document, the D S D nine. So it's my legal opinion that a person can start raising money as long as they turn that into the supervisor of elections prior to that Monday in August, the only thing that must be turned in in August is either the twenty-five petitions that you have to get, or five percent of the salary um, to qualify as well as a, I believe it's a sworn statement of office, there's three requirements that are laid out in the charter. So one thing that the commission is gonna have to decide at some point is if we're going to accept that D S D nine as our sworn affidavit of office, or we're gonna come up with something else, but I am of the opinion, which I'll relay to, um, supervisor of elections, Mr. Overturk, that as soon as tomorrow, people can start qualifying as far as the raising, spending, money part.
Okay.
So that's how we ended up in this situation, so we thought there was a problem, and made it out of there a problem the entire time. The only thing I do recommend is that I think it should be clarified, uh, we should clear up so this confusion doesn't happen again in the future, that our charter is only contemplating the two requirements, uh, that the city requires for you to run, nothing, we're not restricting anything that the state requires you to use.
Okay, so in, in talking to Mr. Overturk, um, the appointment of the campaign treasurer, that is that D S D nine form that he's referring to, and that's what he was thinking that would be the qualifier, that would be the qualifier initially. Um, now, in looking at this, he's saying that the appointment of the campaign treasurer form, and that's what you would do is you have to fill that out, you have to turn it into supervisor of elections, and then you take it to the bank, and then you set up your bank account. Um, he will go ahead and he can accept that, and then he also has the statement of the candidate, and that statement of the candidate, he can accept that as well, and that's up to ten days after, um, you've turned in that D S D nine form. So he said he can accept those two, um, prior to that noon date, Monday. Uh, after that, then your candidate's statement and your oath, that's what he would accept in August, in the qualifying. You'd turn that in, you would turn in your petitions, but he said, because you already have the petitions, you can have those dated prior to that. You would turn in your Form One, which is your financial disclosure, statement of financial interest. You would have to turn in by state law, that same week, that qualifying week, your one percent fee um, that the state requires, or you're asking, um, for a waiver of that, a financial, uh, financial hardship waiver. And then we, the city, have an additional form that we fill out, and it's the City of Crescent City qualification statement. And that basically also says who you are, that you're going, that you're going to, the office you're running for, and what you're, um, what you're willing to serve if you're elected. So he said, those he will accept that week, okay, but prior to that, but you cannot raise any money, and we have to be clear about that, you cannot raise any money until you've submitted that appointment for, of campaign treasurer, that D S D nine form. He did say also that he would come down, um, some people might want to go up to the office and get these forms, but we, the commission, can set a time and date when he can have a kind of a election one-on-one, and, and, and have these available for candidates to, to pick up at that time, to go over the documents with them, um, and so, um, so there we have it, and that statement of candidate, that's the, um, second form he said he would accept, and you have to do that within ten days after you file the first form, or at the same time, oftentimes they do it at the same time, he said, that's the one that basically says you've been given all the rules, you've been given all the forms, you've been given everything, um, required for an election, and you, and, um, and they have, they haven't filled that.
Okay, so much for that, I do hope.
So, well, it's, well, it's, we just needed some clarification, and so we're not gonna have, we don't have an ordinance on it, so at that time, but we did need some clarification. So, that take care of it for everybody?
It, it does, except I have one thing.
Okay.
Um, so where, at the last meeting, this was introduced or brought up by you, I think, during the city manager's report, just as a verbal report. I really wasn't sure what you were saying, and the information passed between, I guess, from Mr. Overturk to you, to the city manager, to the city attorney, everything was done verbally. The problem I see with that is, that, that information, ideally, if there was a significant problem with our election, our election process, sorry, Captain just ran out. Of everything, okay, but anyway, ideally, uh, these communications would be put down in writing and should have been shared with all commissioners, so that we could all know what the problem was. Um, and I think if that had happened, we could have figured this out quite a bit sooner, but anyway, that's water under the bridge, but, um, I think that's really the way it should have happened, because all commissioners should be informed and know what the situation is, and putting it in writing prevents those miscommunications and misunderstandings.
Okay, thank you, so that item has been pulled, we also have the next one that has been pulled, um, I guess the next two have been pulled at this time.
Mayor, twenty-two sixteen was pulled, uh, because we have advertised these so early, and talked with our planners, it seems the planning is only for their recommendations, so we'll come back to you with their recommendations. And twenty-two seventeen was pulled because, uh, I'm writing, starting to write my cover memo, I realized we're actually creating a new chapter, chapter twenty-one, for special events and, and, uh, striking certain parts of chapter three, we didn't advertise it that right, so we have to make sure they advertise what's, uh, what we're, so we pulled that one.
Thank you very much, so now we're gonna move on to resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh one.
A res- a resolution of the city, commissioner of the city of Crescent City, for designated the city own property in Dexter Beach, and the Lake Stella boat ramp, this Lake Stella Park providing for authorization for running, for, for. Here, this is, I mean, we talked about it several months ago, uh, to, to name the area between the boat ramp and the parking lot and Dexter Beach as Lake Stella Park.
Okay. I'm gonna open this up for additional factuals. Hopefully, we need to do that, I guess, I, um.
Just a resolution.
It's a resolution, yes, I'm gonna open it up for public input. Do we have any public input, and this is that area, um, from Dexter Beach over to the boat ramp, correct? And we would just be giving it a specific name.
What does the park transportation do for us?
It's just when we reference it, Lake Sella Park, it actually called that in our redevelopment plan. So it's just a, we had some events recently that, that place over there by the boat ramp.
Okay, do we have any other comments, public comments? Does someone have close public comments on this? Commissioner, we have a resolution to name this the Lake Sella Park. Do you want to have a motion? We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, one of my especially, I don't know, but Chris did always had a problem with parking. Now, if we classify that as a park, okay, we're going, and we do want to have a lot of festivities. We need to make a parking lot, either buy a piece of property adjacent, so we can pay rent and have parking. We don't have enough parking. Just a little festival that we have in now is a big problem. Uh, I ride by there and just, uh, we're just sad to go. For the people to park and don't be in the road, it was all on the grass. That's why the grass would have been around. All that beauty will be gone. So maybe the city needed to look at buying some property where it's close by. For, for parking.
Um, Mayor, I would like to. Make sure he's finished.
I read about it and I looked at it and I said, I should not venture it. If we go ahead and try to find it, park, it could have larger events. Now, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm with you. For the name change, it's alright. But we got to look at it for more than one way too. We got to look at, is it going to take care of parking? That little parking lot, you don't hold that thing up. Funny car, the motor gonna get in there. And, and, and people be all in the, on the route, roadway, and then when you go north, well, on that piece of property, you really don't want to get a park there. Yeah, right. He changed it though. The park is not mowed, so it, I don't think they care. But on, on the south end, where the biggest people focus their parking at, and said, it, it, those are the cars on the grass. That's going to spoil the beauty. That's all I'm trying to say. Yeah, for the name change, it's alright. We need to concentrate on where can we get to get some parking.
Yes, sir.
But it always, al- always been a parking spot problem in Crescent City.
Eagle Lions.
In addition.
A lot of Eagle Lions and also that everything.
Yeah.
I mean, everything soccer means, so, so.
Well, the special events process we're proposing will be forced to look at that and tell the applicant, the event, how are you going to deal with parking? So we'll actually be able to address that formally. And we can also look at opportunities offsite for parking as well.
Commissioner, Davida?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, Commissioner Banks has kind of raised the issue that I want to bring up for you. This land is actually zoned, current zoning and in the future land use method of conservation land. And the staff report on this issue has always said, well, you can have a park in conservation land because the conservation zoning description says that parks are allowed. But I do not feel that that is accurate. And I gave you a little write-up on this. I'm quoting directly from the zoning category language. It doesn't just say parks. The conservation zoning says, lands designated as conservation allows uses, which are consistent with the primary goal of preserving natural habitat. Use potential of these areas is limited to natural open space, limited recreation use, and resource protection. Within the conservation district, the following uses shall apply. And it says permitted uses A and B, and it names local county or state forests, parks and preserves, public and private wildlife management area. So it's not just any type of park. In the dictionary, there's a whole variety of parks. You can have a pedestrian park, you can have a ball, ballpark, we have a dog park. The zoning category said, parks that are focused on preservation. The staff memo for a couple of meetings has said, well, conservation zoning is the only category that allows a park. And that's apparently not true because we have many other parks in the city. And their zoning is either recreation or, uh, public buildings and use that are, it's not the word park that is controlling. They're in zoning that deals with the nature of the activity that occurs there, like recreation or whatever. So here we have a conservation land. And Commissioner Banks has observed that this area is being used for parking. Um, when we had cuts, kids and kayaks the other day, it was used for parking. There have been music events there that, um, I don't think they really fit into the actual zoning. But in addition, the area has been used for parking and it's supposed to be conservation land. So, um, I, I just, I think this is leading us a bit in the wrong direction. And I don't know if y'all, I mean, it's, Commissioner Burton several months ago said that she did not want this to be conservation land. She wanted it to be used. And somehow naming this a park, uh, seems to be a backdoor way to, um, change the zoning somehow. But anyway, I'm, I'm just saying we're.
Be careful, be careful here.
Well, I'm saying, be careful. There is an objective, I'm not sure, uh, whatever. So, yeah.
Commissioner Burton uses the park in very conservation-driven manner. But I also think that it's okay to have a nice little music festival, I shouldn't say festival, uh, but a sunset, uh, music band there in the gazebo. Uh, it's actually very delightful. Uh, Commissioner Burton also realizes that there is a ducking issue there. And we've discussed it, um, Charles and myself and my team on, on how different ways that we might correct that. But we have to be given the opportunity to put those plans in place. And hopefully next year, when we come back with our sunset on Stella, we will have that opportunity to show you that we will be parking place, people in the right place. And, and they will not be on the grass. But we need that opportunity to only get better. And hopefully, um, that's, that's really what it's all about. To, to name it Lake Sella Park is really just to make it a more friendly kind of name, you know, just come to Lake Sella Park. Um, that's really what it is. And, and, you know, we're also looking to put in a bird walk, uh, through Crescent City, not only in, uh, Lake Sella. As, as far as the conservation, I think that's very important. And Saturday, I hope that Commissioner Davida will come and learn about that. And how much that they help conservation throughout, uh, probably different places. So, uh, you know, I'm not sure where she's going with this. I understand what she's saying. Conservation is very important. I take it for her. But I also think that you can use an area and conserve it all at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any further discussions? I'm ready to, I'm ready to take this to a vote if we have no other discussion. We've kind of gone over this and gone over this and gone over this, so.
Okay, we've never, we actually discussed the zoning in detail. Um, I got an email today that was addressed to the commissioner, Commissioner and Honorable Mayor Myers, but it only had my email on it, my city email. It was from, um, I think Melissa, uh, Foitick. Okay, did everybody get one of these? I brought copies in case you didn't, because it's addressed to me. It wasn't addressed to me, so.
Okay.
Is everybody having?
I don't, I just read it. Okay, I'm fine. I'm good. I'm good. I just read it when I gave it to, before I gave it to Commissioner Banks. I'm sharing one with him. So she's not here, she's done work at the park, so. Um, okay, with that, commissioners, do we have any further discussion?
Um, yes, I do. Melissa Foitick, uh, when we had the workshop or hearing or whatever it was, um, she had the suggestion at the time that we, if we're going to name it, that we name it Lake Sella Conservation Area or Lake Sella Conservation Park. Um, and I think that's a very good idea because it reflects the actual zoning. So it would be my suggestion that we take her suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, right now, we have a motion and we have a second to name this Lake Sella Park. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, you've got that, but. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Let's go to resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four.
Resolution, the city, Crescent City Court, establishing hours of operations for all three parks provided for authorization. Mayor, this item, uh, came up a lot about the rules of the parks and what's on the signs and those, the hours. And actually, there was a discussion about hours way back when, talking about what goes on in the park and dusk is not a noticeable, uh, time to close a park. And then the other issue is that we have, uh, several of our parks had lights. So we have, we soon have a lighted, uh, baseball field, lighted tennis courts, and so forth. So, uh, we're not able to use them after dark, even though we have lights. So our recommendation is that those signs in the park hours be, uh, they're open. Currently, they say closed dusk to six AM. We changed, say, open six AM to nine PM.
This time, I'm going to open it up for any additional factual testimony or again. Open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Please, if you come forward, state your name and your address.
This moment, Nineteenth Cedar Street, um, I told you before, I walk the trail, so I take care of the trash at the lake. And I noticed that the sign for Dexter Park was on the floor, so I leaned it against the fence and that is gone, so I hope somebody took care of that sign. And the problem that I'm finding is, uh, the trash. And I don't know, I, I know there's a lot of parents with kids and stuff. I don't know if we can have something, pick up your trash after you leave, leave or something like that, because it's getting into the water. And like, if I walk every day, I pick it up, there's no problem. It goes into the trash. We have plenty of trash cans. That's not a problem. I think the parents just need to be responsible for their items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any others?
I don't think it's all kids throwing trash. For the adults that are not, they're responsible.
Scott King, seven twenty-one, something, uh, pulling an addendum. I really wish that we would consider moving a public comment because I said this, I think, last month. I didn't have anything to say about naming the park. But that's not what y'all talked about for ten minutes. You talked about conservation and use of a piece of land, not about naming a park. I had, may have had something to say about that. And I'm just going to say it now. Maybe, well, some of us are worried about conservation, we'll strip the land. You have tilled up all of the soil, planted the hair grass, poured a concrete sidewalk. There's nothing to conserve. The only thing to conserve is in the lake, the wetland, the grass that's in the lake. And we're not to be parking or doing anything on that. To say that, uh, only a park can be an only conservation land, that's not what was said. What was said was that the only thing you could do on conservation land is have a park. Doesn't have to be conservation land to be a park. But it's conservation land, it could, it can only be a park. Did I say that backwards? So, um, and we're all worried about parking, um, go look at the grass, something wrong with it. We parked there for three or four events, uh, in the last month or two. And there's nothing wrong with the grass. We don't have a parking problem for an event that's going to have twenty people at that little gazebo. Yeah, the town does have a parking, parking problem. But again, if we could move these, the public comment to a point where we've actually got something to say. Or let's keep the meeting, uh, keep the comments on the motion.
On what?
A minute ago, we talked about how long these meetings go. That's because we talk about everything under the sun during, while we're supposed to be talking about the motion. So, uh, that would fix that. So there's two in one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Any other comments? Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, I'm a fisherman. I want to get my boat out five o'clock in the morning, but I can't take it out and I park till six. Is that going to be a problem?
Well, the ramp, the ramps, I don't think this really covers the ramp. There's no hours at the ramp. You drop your boat, park your truck and go. So I don't see this.
And our night fishermen sometimes, like our crappy nights, they go in, they, they'll go most of the night. Our shrimp person will do the same thing.
The misconstrued.
I think it's actually occupy the park prior to six AM.
Okay. All right.
All right. Now that she brought that up, it probably should, because this, isn't, the new boat ramp is Marjorie Neal Nelson Sunrise Park?
Yes.
Yeah.
The lawyer in this guy. I think there could be, an argument could be made both ways.
Okay.
I didn't think about that, to use the ramp before sixteen. Well, maybe if we just excluding boat ramp, the city boat ramp or something like a small change where there's no ambiguity, nobody can bend it for whatever side they want.
What you have, what you have over at Marjorie Neal is, um, you have two, have two categories over there. You have those people that are coming and going with their boats, that are parking their boats there, and then you have the people that visit and sit over in the gazebo.
Yeah, I guess.
So we have to figure out how we want to address.
Or if y'all want to think of the problem.
I didn't think it'd be no problem in the bay.
Could you add some language to the, to the resolution? Could we add resolution, uh, to the language to this that said that those that are launching or, okay, what's the correct word for loading their boats? It's not applicable to them?
Yeah. Because basically, you're not going to see them until they come in or they take it out.
Yeah.
Or come in to unload.
Yeah.
And then it's on, you have to see those people.
So we could do just an exclusion. Yes, Commissioner Davida?
Yeah. I live across from Big Park and I visit other parks. Um, and I think that this is going to create some problems for us. Um, and I looked at what other parks do. Um, I have a question for the city manager. Because, um, I'm not understanding why, well, maybe the word dusk is, you think it's not legally enforceable?
Interpretation.
The captain, Captain Ustery said that dusk is a matter of opinion.
Interpretation.
Okay, well, just, just wait a minute here, because I've looked at parks all over the state. In the state of Florida, all the parks in our area, Dunn's Creek, well, Stephen Foster Full Cultural Park, I think we're being that Hawk Creek Park. They all close at sundown or sunset. I think in, um, actually, in the traffic statute, you have, they define twilight, twilight telling the time between sunset and full night. That's when you have to have your lights on. So dusk might be, uh, maybe a little difficult, but sunset is a legal standard in the Florida statute. And as well, sunset times are clearly available on the Weather Channel Department of Agriculture website. So, um, what many cities do is they have, and this speaks to boats, and in addition to fishing boats, I would say the kayaks. For specific areas that are lighted, I notice, um, for example, in Interlochen, their tennis courts are open until nine PM. Um, we could specifically exempt launching of boats and kayaks or coming in of boats and kayaks. But I think we're going to have a problem because all of our parks are not lighted and most of our parks are in residential areas. In our parks, so in the winters, people will be there, it's going to be dark from six to nine. When it's dark, um, there's all kinds of things that go on in our parks. We've had vandalism. Um, we have drinking. In Eagle Lions Park, there's fists, empty fists of liquor, whatever. We have people who are homeless. It's, um, we have people playing loud music. The people who live on West Grand, Grand Londo sometimes have a problem with people. Um, a local business told me that there's different kinds of, uh, dealing over there. So to me, um, I think that it should be specifically sunset, which is the legal standard, um, except for the specific park areas that are light, the tennis court, Eagle Lions.
Okay.
And the ball field. And then we should also address the boats.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burton?
She's right. There are certain times for sunset, sunrise. However, okay, I'm not sure exactly where you post that every day, so that somebody knows what time they got to come in or some, what time you leave. And I don't think that Captain Ustery can do anything with that, okay? Not really. So I just think it would be easier to set some times, some, some solid times to open and close, which is easier. And you have your winter hours, your summer hours, because summer goes longer, winter shorter. And, and, uh, that's very clear, okay, to our sheriff and our, his deputies, what time to close things up and people should be in there after those certain hours. We have to go back.
Yeah, since after the, each day, we say, uh, boat ramp hours, use of boat ramp shall be permitted. I think it would be early enough.
It would be five to.
Five AM to nine.
Well, it just depends because some of them are coming in, some of them come in at one o'clock. You've got people out there shrimping and they'll shrimp all, you know, they'll shrimp most at night. So I think at twenty-four, seven, I mean, twenty-four hours a day, you should be able to allow to get your boat in and out of there. And if you get, what happens if you break down out there and all of a sudden you're, you're being towed in and it's two o'clock in the morning, there's a deputy sitting there, you know, and you, you know, that, that.
Here's, here's something else. I have a friend that her group is a kayak group. They like to do a moonlight run occasionally. If the water and the weather is pretty, it's gorgeous out, but this would restrict that too.
So if we do put something in there about launching of kayaks, of boats and kayaks, and a recreational, you know.
Forbidden twenty-four hours.
But the rest of it, where people are sitting around, you know, after, start, you know, at a certain hour, those people have to be fast asleep.
Yeah, but Mayor, in fact, the first one, the reason that most parks don't have a footmower is because there's about a two and a half hour swing during the course of the year. And sunset is a very definable standard. And I think it's common sense for law enforcement that they're not going to, like, we don't even arrest people, we trespass them or ask them to leave. But all of our, well, not all, but the majority of our parks in residential neighborhoods, having people there, I mean, we want to give people the full use while it's light and enlightened areas, but having people there while it's dark is just asking for trouble. It's hard enough. We only have really one officer on duty at a time. And I, I just think this is a problem. If we say sunset, which the state of Florida uses and other towns use, we are supposed to post that. And certainly, um, that lets deputies know that when it's pitch dark, the people aren't supposed to be there. I think in state parks that I've ever gone to, you know, when it's, when the sun is setting, that's the time to pack up and home. Um, but certainly, when it goes from sunset to dark, that is, that's a pretty bright morning. And, uh, I think that would give.
Still have a problem you're talking about, even when you sunset to, or sunrise to sunset. Uh, the boating and fishermen and.
You still have to make an exception. You have to still make an exception.
That was what I said in the first place, that we should accept the specific lighted areas like the tennis court or the ballpark. And as well, the launching and coming in, I don't know what words you use for that, um, for boats and, um, boats and kayaks, and we want to cover.
Okay.
Canoes and kayak.
Let's, you have a suggestion?
I do, uh.
We don't have a motion yet.
One thing, um, about the boat ramps, you could say something like, I don't know if it's the right term, launching slash intriguing watercraft from boat ramps is permitted twenty-four hours per day. But I thought on the other point, um, if we were to say it's, it's, uh, I think this is not too complicated, six AM to nine PM, April through September.
I was thinking at least.
Six AM to six PM.
Yeah.
Uh, October to March or something.
Or you could do daylight, you could do daylight, you know, savings or, you know.
But I've heard that's going away, so I don't know.
Okay, well, well, then we're going to have to change it anyway because then we'll be lit up till nine o'clock anywhere. So, so we'll have to, this will have to come back to us again. So, but I understand what you're saying. I was thinking the same thing, that that would be a way to alleviate that. Yes, sir, Commissioner Banks?
Well, let me say this. Here we go, beating the dead horse again. How long, now, uh, look, I think a problem is, do we have with the parks now?
We, well, it just depends on who you ask.
Very quiet. It's been very quiet the last.
Um, no, not exactly. We have people sleeping in the parks, drinking in the parks, driving their cars in the parks after dark.
I'm basically just speaking about time, not, not, you know, you can't control everything people does in a park. Because you, you ain't got the number of, when they sit out there and watch. But what we are trying to do here now, come up with a time.
Just to make it enforceable for the, for the deputies.
A time, a learning with time. And we going back to time and we ain't going nowhere.
Well, Charles has made a recommendation. Charles has made a recommendation. So commissioners, I'm going to ask with his recommendation, does anybody want to make a motion to accept his suggestions?
I know that we accept Charles' new suggestion for the parks.
April to September.
And then October to March.
I said.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay.
Nay. And Mayor, does that include the votes?
Yes, he included the votes. Yep. Excluded them. Excluded them. Twenty-four hours, okay.
Bring back that change.
Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and open up. Charles, I'm going to turn it over to you with our business items.
Well, the first item is actually, those were cases, um, to present, uh, two felony enforcement, um, cases that are coming to you from the federal court.
We should serve those to us when we first get here.
Right.
Okay, let's go.
This was Matty Fadyan airs zero seven zero two zero four. Address is forty east Grand Londo. Violations are chapter, chapter ten, section ten point twenty, twenty-three, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
This was a property we sent a demand letter notifying we were gonna go foreclosure.
This is a copy of the codes. First report, first violation was first observed in November of two thousand and six. The notice of code violation was the property owner. That's three code board hearings, latest was May twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-two. Fined approved for five thousand four hundred and sixty-five days at twenty-five dollars a day. Two thousand and seven to March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, total fine approved one hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Update of compliance was filed March twenty-eighth. Twenty twenty-two, received request for the reduction on April seventh, twenty twenty-two. In February twenty twenty-two, the city attorney sent a demand letter to foreclose on the code enforcement lady. The two pictures tonight. Took one was on March tenth, and one was May eighteenth. Property owner has gone in and secured the building. She's here, we'd like to speak to her. Staff recommendation was to reduce the fine to a thousand dollars payable within thirty days of today's meeting. The heirs of Matty Fadyan requested the fine be, the bond be reduced to zero. And on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, the code enforcement board recommendation is that the fine be reduced to zero. And whoever is here who'd like to speak, okay?
I'd like to speak to you.
Okay.
Just went on for a lot of years.
Yes.
Okay, now, hurry up, okay? President, there was a lot of years where. What is it about Preston City that you started saying right? I mean, what is it that, you know, you you. Put lean. And just let her ride for years and years and years until it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of leans on these homes. It's not just for Ann's home, but a lot of the homes here just seem, it's like a donut hole there, where it just flat, you know. And and then all of a sudden, they, their compliance, I mean, it's had almost fifteen years to really sit there. In that shape. I mean, roofs, I I believe it, roofs are probably still falling in. They granted to put some whatever on the doors. But but when is a house really in compliance? When, when, when can you say that a house is actually in compliance, nobody can live in that house? So what's the next step?
This case was from two thousand and seven.
I know.
I don't have very much paperwork on it. There was another building on this property that was the original violation and not this house. I believe that the the building was taken down probably years ago and the city didn't close the, close the case. There's nothing in the file that says they ever made a reinspection after the code enforcement hearings. So I don't have anything to go on except for I've seen myself, which is fifteen years later, like you said.
But when is it, when was this house built? This house that we're looking at now, that's now in compliance, that gee, they tore down another building, okay, that building's gone. But now we're dealing with this building, and how long has that building been there to to deal with, how long?
I don't know how long that.
I know it wasn't built in twenty twenty-two.
Just glad for you to come forward, yes.
Um, first, Veronica Glover, five twelve grand on the east. First, we need to establish, Ms. Burton, that the fines were inaccurate, they were not correct. When we received the letter from their attorney, that we didn't even know fines were going on the property. Because what was asked, my father built some buildings, was building additional apartments, and he never finished them. And we were asked to tear them down, and we complied with what was asked to do, to tear them down. So. After that, the only thing that you could say that we did not do as far as is keep up the property. But the timeline of saying that that was not taking care of everything that we were asked to do, we, it was taken care of. Bob Share was the code enforcement officer. Another incident that was taking place is that when the officers were after a suspect, that they were running up in the bushes. And we were asked to clean that up. So and that's the, that's the next thing. But what took place is that these files were never closed back. But we took care of when we were asked to do something, we took care of it.
It, and I, I think I understand that, I just don't understand how a city, that's us, can keep this thing rolling, okay? When, when really, from two thousand and seven, at some point, you know, you gotta step in. I mean, what's our, what's our procedure? When do, when we go.
Order here, we, aren't we hearing the fine reduction, not, I mean, should this be a different item on the agenda?
I just.
Does it pass, sorry?
Yes, yes, we are, but.
And 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 now.
Excuse me, sir, I'm gonna ask you to, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just saying that I didn't understand what you're saying.
No, it's crazy.
And but like I said, when I, I'm concerned about all of the folks that are in our situation. That have a fine going on, that did not know a fine was going on. And this was prior to her getting here. So and that needs to be noted that these are five, this here is a case way long before she took this position.
So we've had, we had, Michael was in between Cher, Bob Cher and Pam too, so this is three code enforcement officers, okay?
Yes, and so that's, that is why we were asking it to be reduced, we add request that it be reduced to zero. Because I I mean, we shouldn't be penalized for something that you did not know, that we were unaware of.
And Pam, you haven't been able to find anything in your file showing that it was. The proper documentation, is that correct?
No, there's no documentation, the only thing I did find. There was an issue with permits, but I checked with the building department, there were not any permits pulled. But like Miss Glover stated in the code enforcement hearing. The city just wanted the building taken down, so they just did what they had to do to be in compliance. The house that's there now is not the issue back in two thousand and seven.
Okay. Okay.
Correct, yes.
Living in that house, sir.
Yes, yes, because at that time, my stepmother was living there, and my father, and he passed away the end of two thousand and and six. And then my niece moved there. And and I don't know anything I noticed on there about abandoned cars, we never had abandoned cars there, so, you know.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I just. I think the city just lets us.
And again, that's on us, and that's something else we're gonna have to deal with, we'll deal with that, we need to deal with that at a. A different time, right now, we've got this on in front of us. I do wanna ask you this, as far as, you're not the sole owner of this, correct?
No.
So you have, you have to, decisions have to be made without.
And and I mean, and we want, it's been in our family, it was my great grandmother's home. And so it's been in our family for a long time, and we're hoping that we can figure out to some way to restore the house or to do something. Where, you know, with the home are just tearing down.
Okay.
So we're, we are, we're not just ignoring it, but we, that's what we're hoping to do.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner DeVito, you have a comment?
Um, yes, you had a question, you asked it, so which is, what is the relationship of Miss Glover, you're one of the Matty Fadyan heirs?
Yes.
Okay, so in your materials, and I think I remember this. Wasn't there another issue with the house or with the property about cleanup? And this is really a question for Ms. Taylor. Wasn't there a mowing issue, were there fines that accrued in twenty nineteen relating to the mowing?
It was in twenty eighteen, yes.
Right, Miss Glover's, because I think I remember it, maybe it's been coming to the commission, I don't know. Of many of the pictures.
Well, it says in twenty nineteen, it was brought, that there was concern, and they requested that the property be cleaned up and if the issue was taken care of.
Right, but usually, I'm just, I'm just curious, that's why, I mean, it's had issues over the years, there's no administrative fee. Obviously, a hundred and thirty-six dollars.
It doesn't have the date of cost in your package.
Okay, but the code enforcement board said they did not want to impose the cost.
I didn't understand.
The code enforcement board chose not to impose the cost.
The administrative cost, why did they choose not to impose the administrative cost? When, when that's kind of something that we've spoken to them before about.
It felt that it was a fair thing to do, to do this to New York.
Okay.
All right, and Mayor, I would just like to say one thing, as far as why Preston City does what it does, Ms. Taylor has only been working here.
Okay, we're not, you've already called point of order on that, we've decided that we're not going to discuss this further until.
I'm saying there's no city employee sitting at this, standing at the podium or sitting at the table that worked here with any of this one.
Right, we understand that, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any other questions?
I do have one more comment.
Yes.
When I bring your case to the code enforcement board and then to the commission. It, the request for fine reduction states that the property has to be in compliance. This house was not the issue back in two thousand and seven, but they had to do something to bring it secure, to bring it before you tonight. And they did that.
And they did do that.
There's pictures in your packet that Miss Glover submitted to me, that I I gave it to her.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners?
So you're saying this house is been in compliance for a long, like, it was another house that was not.
There was another building.
So that was the one that was not in compliance, this one's been in compliance for a long, that's what you're saying.
It's not been in compliance all along, but it's in compliance before I took it to the code enforcement board.
Once you were noticed on it, you brought it into compliance, and you closed it up, you shorted up, and we didn't short it up, but you.
Yes, and and like those fines are on another building, it that. That's running on the the additional buildings that my father had built that we were asked to tear down. So not anything to do with this house.
Mayor, do we have a vote? No, we don't have a motion yet.
You can make a motion. Okay, and there's a reason for this. I would, well, I'm not sure what I should move, I guess, provided that it remains in compliance until the administrative costs are paid. I would move that we take the code board's recommendation to waive the leans, reduce the leans to zero. But that the administrative cost should be imposed. And I say the administrative cost because the house has had to come, or the property has had to come before the code enforcement board. And the officer has had to take some action, so I think it's fair to require payment of the administrative fee, just because. It, there has been a certain amount of slippage and code enforcement has had to take action. And but the lien or the fine reduced to zero.
Okay, when you, with your motion, I just wanna bring to your attention that the part of that administrative. Include dates back to oh six, which was on the building that was brought into compliance, that we have negated the fine on. So you might want to start a date on those administrative costs, starting at a certain time specific, or date specific. And back some of those out from the oh six and the oh seven, I'm just making that, bringing that to your attention to make sure that that's not overlooked.
No, because, I mean, it did require, I mean, it did require action by the city to get something done, and it's not a huge amount of money. And I I just think that it's a matter of fairness.
Okay, so Pam, you're looking at the administrative cost being two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Right.
And with that, we would put a lien, if that's not paid, then we would put a lien just on the property, so that any time in the future of the soul, that would be payable to the city, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's a very valuable piece of property.
Okay, Commissioners, you've heard Commissioner DeVito's. Motion to negate the fine, however, charge the administrative fee of two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, we have a second. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
I would would like the code enforcement, no, I I don't know, I know Pam do a good job, she goes around, but. I would like to come up with more standard ruling. Regarding the west side of town, if if it is, because now we just switch and swat and switch and swat it. And it it got me confused, but. You gotta look at the people, I reckon they confused too. Some of the decisions that we make about these properties.
Yes, sir.
We need to come up, oh, I never, I I never was in favor. Putting a fine on a piece of property that probably detects person, detects and facility, and for lack of having. The property value, I'm just gonna use a price now. Ten thousand dollars. I'm just using that figure. And then we put a tax in on, tax in on, and taxes on to get a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. And property was. Prime, uh, prime, what I'm trying to point out, lying there on Florida Street, right by that big camo tree in the yard there. At the edge of the road there. The property, the the fine was so high on that. The man would value it at about. I think fifteen hundred dollars.
What you're saying is the fine is way over what the value of the property is.
Value of the property.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to.
We need to look.
We need to work, we need to work on that.
Yeah, we really need to work on that. And it it's two or three other elements that we need to work on in that situation too.
So right now, we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you gonna give a time specific on when it needs to be paid?
We usually say thirty days, six, seven.
My recognition was thirty days, is that sufficient?
Do you, is thirty days good, or do you, would you like sixteen?
Thirty days would be fine.
Thank you so much, I. Thank you, and I I do, I do wanna share this with you, that the board has made this determination some time ago. And I'm disappointed in our code enforcement board, because we have given them those somewhat of some directives. That administrative costs are necessary. And if if they are going to reduce those fines, that they do at least leave the administrative cost in there, because it does cost the city. So it's nothing against, please know, it's nothing against property owners, it's just that that's. So it's nothing against, please know, it's nothing against property owners, it's just that that's what, I'm the direction that the commission has gone, has been going, actually. So I just wanted to bring that to you. Thank you.
Ma'am, do we need a motion to set this for everybody?
Um, you can, you can, we can, we can get a motion to set the thirty day, I'm sure Ms. Glover's gonna take care of it, but. Um, go ahead, if you want to make a motion.
Why, um, second motion? So my second motion is that the, I guess, that the fine reduction and the requirement to pay the administrative cost of two ninety seven point eight nine, um, that those be paid within thirty days.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
My second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go to our next one. We have another code enforcement lien reduction request.
Next case is Luann, Luann Moore, case number twelve dash zero three dash zero seven dash zero two zero eight, eight oh nine Randolph Street. Our relations were chapter six, section six point one, chapter ten, dash twenty, twenty three, twenty four, and twenty seven. This is a two thousand and twelve case. Happens with the codes that were originally cited. First violation was observed March seventh, two thousand and twelve, notices went to the property owner on March seventh, two thousand and twelve, and June eighth, two thousand and twelve. Code board hearings were June twenty sixth and March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Fine accrued worth three thousand six hundred and seventy four days, twenty five dollars per day. March twenty seventh, two thousand and twelve, and April eighteenth, twenty twenty two. Total fine is ninety one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, affidavit of minus was twelve on April nineteenth, twenty twenty two. I received a request for the fine lien reduction on February twenty third, twenty twenty two. For two pictures I recently took of the property on April eighteenth, twenty twenty two, before Mr. Henry's office property. Uh, you couldn't even see the house that was there.
It's over.
The wild one.
Yeah.
Um, he's made tremendous progress, they ended up fixing up um, his request for lien reduction in your packet. He wants to make this his home for his family. Staff recommendation was to reduce the fine to a thousand dollars, paid within thirty days of today's meeting. Mr. Henry requested that the lien of ninety one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars be reduced to a thousand dollars on May twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. The code enforcement board recommend, recommended that the fine lien be reduced to a thousand dollars. Excuse me, that does not include the administrative cost, but administrative cost in your packet.
Okay, why did, why did they not take into consideration the administrative costs?
I don't know, um.
Are you glad you?
Aye, aye.
Here, you, you come up, thank you, Mr. Henry. Thank, I'm so sorry, you've had, all of you've had to sit through a long meeting, you learned a lot, but, I hope.
Questions for Mr. Henry?
Uh, do we have any questions for Mr. Henry, commissioners?
Um, I do. Um, hi, Mr. Henry, thank you so much for being here on Crescent City. Um, there's a lot of paper in this packet, is, did you acquire, did you acquire this property by purchase or by kick claim?
Quick claim.
That says in the information.
I bought the property from a company and they issued me a quick claim. Um, I've spent, I'm, I'd say it's close to eighteen thousand dollars, um, with my own time to
Sure.
uh, cut trees down, that property was delinquent, it sat there for over twenty years without anybody ever cutting the grass or trees or anything. I think we took probably over a hundred trees off the property. I mean, you know, little trees, it was just, it was just completely, it was piles of trash that were head high.
But I think I'm familiar with the house.
We took.
My question was, did you have a relationship, uh, did you have some kind of relationship with the company, was it armed, linked, linked or not?
Oh, no ma'am, uh.
And what was the name of the company?
The name of the company is, um, I should look on a creative site and try and think. Oh, it's Euro Atlantic Two, they're from Euro Beach.
If we, if we put a, um, do we have a lien, we have a lien on this, that we, we have a lien filed on this, did they make you aware when you did this? As you, as a quick claim, you probably didn't, did you go through the?
Before I ever bought the property, I actually approached Pam and I said, ma'am, I want to try to make this a home for me and my family. Do you think if I could just work real hard and get it clean and keep working on it? If I could, and she said I did it, she thought if I would put a lot of time in it and get it in compliance, that I could come here and uh, have a reasonable uh, reduction. I put a thousand dollars because I knew it took, it took the city of Crescent City, you know, time to put the liens, I just thought if I, I would be willing to pay a thousand dollars like that, you know? I've got a budget and I've got applications here for uh, building permits to go ahead and start working on the property.
Okay.
And I have a budget for me and my family to uh, to improve it and fix it and get it back all the way livable.
You're gonna restore the, you're gonna restore the, the house?
I plan on.
Okay, okay.
And I, I have the building permits here.
Okay.
I just uh, I don't know if y'all know what I wrote on there.
We do, we have it.
Your decision would make it whether I can do that or not.
Okay, now, Commissioner Banks had a comment?
Yeah, I would, I would let it get close, because anybody passed by that house, the house just got billable when he bought the property.
You, you're familiar with that property.
Yeah, I was good, I was good, I have it, when summer come, it dries up, and the house naked door, I, I was very scared, somebody went in and gutted it out. Took all the wiring out of it. And if you go by there now, it, it is amazing, and I seen some action there today, I don't know where that, when you were out there today.
The doorknobs, anything that they could use, sinks, whatever, yes.
It took everything out of the house.
My neighbors that I, I introduced myself, they actually offered to come here and speak on my behalf tonight, that I know about it, really, like, you know, I appreciated it. I wanted, you know, I just, I just wanted to turn it into a nice place to be.
So you intend to live there?
I do, please.
Can I go ahead and just say this? I loved your letter, it was heartfelt, and uh, you, I went out and looked at the house, you've done a tremendous amount of work on that. And it could be a, a nice house for a, a family, you have one child?
I have a three year old.
Three year old, yes, that could be a nice house, what I would like, and I'm asking, let's don't fine the thousand dollars. Let's do the two sixty three, twenty three. Yes, I'm just throwing it out before I make a motion, because you have a lot of money to go into that house yet. And a thousand dollars could probably go quite a ways to painting and whatever, but I'm sure you have plumbing, wiring.
Everything.
Windows, everything, and I would love to have a family in that house again. But one who was a good friend of my mother, she was a sweetheart, and I'd like to see the house back again, not that that's important, but, okay.
I forgot.
Here goes the motion, I move that we remove the thousand dollar fine and keep the administrative fee of two sixty three, twenty three, and that to be paid in, is a month later. Okay, give you uh, a month, thirty days to pay the fine.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, um, we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Good luck with that.
The motion hears, um, in, within thirty days, so you can, you said we would take care of that, we appreciate it, welcome to Crescent City. Um, and, and with any of our fines, we just need to be cognizant, Pam, that they're there to get those properties brought back into compliance. Um, but it does have cost involved from the staff standpoint, so that's why these administrative costs are so, you know, we just can't, we gotta. I'm asking you, Pam, to reiterate that to your board, please, okay?
I want to say this, it's getting busy, it's gonna be my name. I might go fishing back there.
I, I actually had cut a path from the, the land to the lake, and it was real thick, but it, we worked, we've been working on that property. And to take the, I have a dump trailer, and I have a decent truck, by the time I drive here to San Augustin, loaded up the dump some of the possible. I make trips back and forth, I've been spending hundred, hundred twenty dollars a day in fuel plus, I've been paying my health. So we, I've been working on it, my next thing right here, I, I got the application for building permits.
Okay.
And after today, then I, I will go tomorrow and make sure my building permits get uh, you know, so yeah.
Thank you, and welcome, welcome to Crescent City.
I love Crescent City.
Thank you. Okay.
Next item there is a first public hearing, to develop block grant application, Melissa Fox is here from Fred Fox stations, to lead us through that process.
Again, I apologize.
Good evening, my name's Melissa Fox, I'm with Fred Fox Enterprises, corporate consulting firm, and I'm here tonight to advise the commission as well as the public of the city's opportunity to apply for a community development block grant. The city's eligible to apply for up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are three categories in which we can apply for funding, um, the applications are due July twenty first, and you do need to select a category. You can only select, uh, you can only submit one application at a time. The first is the housing rehabilitation, and that's where the city would go in and they would either do rehab work or demolish a place, owner occupied, low to moderate income homes, you can see this. You have to be owner occupied, have to be low to moderate income, and you have to address all code violations, so you couldn't just like, with a ship program, you can go in and you can put a new roof on, but with um, C D G, HUD requires that every code violation you brought up, you know. Um, with six hundred and fifty thousand, believe it or not, you probably only get to do about four or five homes with that, it doesn't go very far. Um, the second is a commercial revitalization, that's where you, during street scaping, sidewalks, pedestrian malls, building to sidewalk, et cetera, all in downtown commercial area, the purpose is to revitalize commercial downtown and to get more people to come downtown. Um, the city would be the service area, and the city would need to be at least fifty one percent low to moderate income. The third is a neighborhood revitalization, and that's where the city would address infrastructure items and residential areas. You could do water line replacement, sewer line replacement, lift stations, sewer lift stations, you can do parks, paving, drainage, community centers. Um, and there again, the beneficiaries must be a minimum of fifty one percent low to moderate income with application threshold. So for instance, if you're doing road paving, and you're doing two blocks, those two blocks, at least fifty one percent of the residents on those two blocks would need to be low to moderate income. The fourth category is kind of the standalone, um, those, the, once the cycle opens, you can submit for funding for economic development, and you submit until there's no funding left for that year. In the next fiscal year, there will probably be more funds for that category. Um, so that one you can submit at any time, as long as there's funding. Um, the first three are due July twenty first, and you can actually have an open housing rehab, commercial revitalization, or neighborhood revitalization, and apply for economic development funding, it's the only one you can actually apply for if you haven't had it. And that's where you would provide infrastructure on city easement property to facilitate a new business coming into the city or the expansion of existing businesses. Business must create new long-term jobs and be included as a developer if you have a fish. And for this category alone, you're actually eligible to apply for up to one point five million dollars. And so for every thirty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars and ninety nine cents that is being requested, one full-time job unless you create it. When we refer to L I, low to moderate income, those are the HUD limits that are set, they are updated every year. So for Putnam County, just to give you an example, on the bottom, for our family of four, the maximum you could make is forty eight thousand five hundred. That low, eighty percent, that is low to moderate income, that's the income ranges. There are additional points in your application, you're competing with other small cities and counties throughout state. Um, if the city can leverage points towards the project, then you get an extra point for every thousand dollars, a maximum of twenty five points, twenty five points for twenty five thousand dollars. The local community can exceed the twenty five thousand, you just don't get any extra points, you can also go less than that, you can commit ten thousand, get ten points. Um, for neighborhood revitalization and commercial revitalization projects only, if the city submits with their application into your stamp construction plans and specs, and you can show the documentation how to apply for all your permits, you get an extra fifty points in your application. You can't, you bring a book for shuttle wedding design hall, so you can keep in contact with the engineer for the design of that, the city would have to pay full city funds, even if the application is funded. The steps that are required in the application process is to appoint a citizens advisory task force that has been completed. The second is to advertise and hold a C A T F meeting to discuss possible projects, the C A T F did meet this meeting at five P M. And they did recommend that the um, city pursue a neighborhood revitalization for the stat level new project, which we'll refer to. Um, the third is to advertise and hold a first public hearing to obtain public comments and direction by city commission to move forward on the timing of project. That's what we're here for tonight, the fourth is to advertise and hold a fair housing workshop, that gives you extra points in your application. Now, we do that, that's the next item on the agenda, and the fifth is to advertise and hold a second public hearing to finalize the application. At that point, a rough draft would be presented to the commission as well as the public, we would retain any public comment on that, we would amend the application as, you know, as needed. And then we would submit the application on the city's behalf by July twenty first. At this time, do you want to open the public comment, and I can also answer any questions.
I'm gonna open it up for public comment, do we have any public comments at this time? My, okay, sure, one more, you know the drill.
What properties are being considered for?
Yeah, this project is installation of a water main on Main Street from uh, central north to three oh eight, as well as a generator, the lift station Bay Lane. Or, I think it's an emergency backup generator, which that station currently does not have, so this project would combine those two projects into one grand application.
Yeah, so it'd be Main Street, so we've got, and then the next one that we would.
No, this will allow us to uh, not only hook up the residents on Main Street, but put in fire hydrants on Main Street's pole.
Yes, ma'am.
This one is nineteen Cedar Street, uh, I went by Alarmos today, uh, the Mexican restaurant.
Okay.
And I asked them, uh, how come I don't see more representation of the Mexican population at the meetings? And they said they were here a few times, and they go, they gave up because what they want is a park for the children. I went to Domino's Pizza, and there were six uh, teenagers there, and all of them were bilingual. We have a lot of Mexican residents here, and they want to be heard, he said he has to go to Polaca to have a good park. Just in case we want to have that in consideration, these people are asking for a park, not a little park next to the dog park, but an actual park, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have, Ms. Domins, you know, you realize we do for the children, we have Harry Banks' park, I don't know if you've ever been to Harry Banks' park, but we do have Harry Banks' park.
I just told them to go to the media, if they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other public comment at this time? The, and then I'm gonna close public comment.
Okay, so at this time, all I need is just.
Okay, so at this time, all I need is just a motion, you know, to move forward with either staff recommending project or another project. Okay. Commissioners? Do we have, um, do we want to make a motion?
I still root that we, um, authorize for the Fox agency to be forward with the staff recommendation um, for the North Main Street Water Main and Bay Station project.
We have a motion, do we have a second before we open up to discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Good night, ladies. Thank you.
There is nothing more important than working with a station.
Absolutely. Okay, so seeing no other, well, I will, Commissioner Banks has stepped away, did you wanna show us something, Charles or?
Melissa, for the next.
For the next, okay. Um, Commissioner Banks has, has stepped away for just a moment, so before we go. It was so cold, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, and I'm usually quite hot natured.
Our strict air coming across duty and then, yeah, I don't worry about the rest of the.
And all those bodies out there live, so they're not taking up all my sh-.
I know.
Well, actually, they're not generating heat, that's. Those.
We're shivering.
Yeah, dying, probably, yeah.
What do you feel, um, our chances are with this, as far as?
It, it is hard to say, we'll have a better idea when we come back for the second public hearing as far as what we project your score to be.
Okay.
Um, the good thing about this cycle is the state's actually a fiscal year behind, um, in awarding funds. So what they're looking to do is they're looking to combine both twenty-one and twenty-two funding from HUD. There'll be a lot of, they get in, so they're getting, they're gonna have over fifteen million dollars. They typically have about twenty-six, twenty-seven, they're gonna have well over that. So they're, the state's thinking is, we're gonna be able to turn pretty far down the list this time, so, you know. Um, but we, we'll have a better idea of what we think your projected score is gonna be, um, at the second public hearing. Thank you.
That's coming now.
There, before Commissioner Banks gets back to the comment about the parks, if you look at our comprehensive plan, we have, and, um, City Manager Kennedy pointed this out years ago, we have about four to five times as many parks as the state standard is, the parks, including, like, the.
Okay, here's another thing.
I mean, we're, we're.
We have a lot of Mexican children, young people that are leading on the tennis court every night.
Dancing and.
Dancing. But I'm saying, just when you, when you say that they have their park, we actually are very well supplied.
We have, we have. Okay, Commissioner Banks is back, so I am ready to take this to a vote, if there's no more discussion. We have a motion and we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or pose nay. Okay, so move.
All right, the next item on the agenda is just the fair housing workshop, no action will need to be taken, I just need to go with it, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing-related transactions, including the sale, rental, buying, sale of dwellings. Discrimination includes refusing to rent to someone, steering someone away to a particular type of housing or neighborhood, enacting zoning measures to exclude particular groups, et cetera, because of membership in a protected class. The federally protected classes are race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability. A city or a state, or, you know, they can have other protected classes, these are just the federally protected classes. What is prohibited? No one may take any of the following actions based on race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. Refuse to rent or sell housing, refuse to negotiate for housing, set different terms, conditions, or privileges for sale or rental of a dwelling, falsely deny that housing is available for inspection, sale, or rental, or profit persuade or try to persuade homeowners to sell or rent dwellings by suggesting that people of a particular race, age, sex, et cetera, have moved or about to move into the area or part of the neighborhood, or deny any person access to membership or participation in any organization, facility, or service related to the sale or rental of dwellings. Additionally, it is unlawful to discriminate against the person whose household includes one or more children who are under eighteen years of age. This is known as familial status, it's in which one or more minor children live with a parent or legal custodian. There's additional protection if you have a disability. If you have a physical or mental disability, including hearing, mobility, visual impairment, cancer, heart, pain, illness, or H I V, A I Ds, that substantially limits one or more major life activities or are regarded as having such a disability, a housing provider may not refuse to let you make reasonable modifications to your dwelling at your expense. A landlord may commit changes only if you agree to restore the property to its original condition when you move. If you're handicapped and you're in a wheelchair, you should be allowed to put in a handicap ramp. You might have to remove that and restore that to its original condition when you move, but you should be allowed to make that. Or if you're, uh, in a building with a no pets policy, they must allow visually impaired tenants to be desired. What housing is exempt? The Federal Fair Housing Act exempts owner occupied buildings with no more than four units and single-family houses sold or rented without the use of a broker. So that's, if it's a private owner, they have one house, they're renting it out, they are not, they are exempt under the Federal Fair Housing Act. Uh, senior housing exemption, these are the fifty-five plus communities, elderly communities. These exempt some senior housing facilities and communities from liability for community status discrimination. They have to be provided for any state or federal program that HUD has determined to be specifically designed and operated to assist elderly persons and intended for and solely occupied by persons fifty-five or sixty-two years of age or older. You can't just deem yourself one, you have to actually be under a state or federal program that HUD has determined, that, um, has certified. If you think your rights have been violated, you can contact the following: the Florida Commission on Human Relations, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development in the Southeast Regional Office, or the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development in Washington, D.C. Um, additionally, the city of Crescent City does have a fair housing ordinance, which outlines steps and timelines in which complaints must be submitted and responses provided. What you will need to provide is your name and address, the name and address of the person you're complaining against, the address or other identification of the housing involved, a short description of the alleged violation, and the dates of the alleged violation. What happens when you file a complaint? The office receiving the complaint will notify the person filing the complaint and the alleged violator of the filing, and allow the respondent time to submit a written answer to the complaint. Investigate your complaint and determine whether there is reasonable cause to believe that the respondent violated the Fair Housing Act. Notify you and the respondent if HUD cannot complete its investigation within one hundred days of filing your complaint and provide reason for the delay. Now during the time, during the complaint investigation, HUD is required to offer you and the respondent the opportunity to voluntarily resolve your complaint through conciliation. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
No.
Okay. Great presentation, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did read the entire fair housing material.
Yeah. Um. She's not the one that you spoke to about our excess.
No, that was a, a USDA grant.
I thought that was the U.S. Mary's, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask her what her thoughts were on that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions for, for?
No.
Okay. You're good, you're good, thank you very much. Okay, so.
The next item is consideration of a pole barn for public works, utilizing Better Place funds. This is something I've heard about since I started here.
Yeah.
I heard that since I moved here.
I keep talking to Keith about putting it in next year's, uh, budget, and he, he informed me, uh, rather so, that price of steel just goes up and up and up. So what he proposed is that we can, we can actually buy the building as a, it's a kit, and it will take about five or six months to be delivered, then we'll negotiate, uh, to see what we can, he thinks ten, fifteen thousand dollars probably to get it built, the footers put in and to construct the building, but if we don't buy it now, it's just gonna keep getting more expensive. My request is for the, the cost of the building out of a Better Place fund.
Okay. So move. So the cost of the building would come out of Better Place, and then the, the labor construction would probably be in next year's budget?
Yes, we'll actually put that in the Better Place, but.
Better place, okay.
I, I just have one.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any discussions? Okay.
Yes, I have a quick question, sir, is that part of the shortage, that it takes five months to be delivered?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Um, we're still actually waiting for the generators we ordered last fall.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will pose nay. So move.
Mayor, the next item is a discussion, um, we've talked off and on throughout the year about, um, changes and, and there are changes that would require a charter, a change to our charter would require, uh, to go to the voters. We need to get anything we wanna do to the supervisor of elections by the beginning of August, to make this, um, election coming up in November. So, uh, I listed on here and several others, some things that we've talked about, uh, administrative supervisor is not called city manager, that's a, that's an easy one, um, to actually, currently, I am required to be the clerk for the city. Um, and Karen hired as clerk, and then we were informed, reminded that actually the charter says the city manager, the su, the administrative supervisor shall be the clerk of the city. So this would be an opportunity to actually allow us to hire a clerk. Uh, also, we talked about, um, currently required, we're hiring, uh, appointment and removal of department heads that has to come through the commission, so, it's a hiring decision that, so I can't, um, that was an issue with our finance director, um, to, to fire her, I would've had to bring her in to public forum, and that would, fortunately, she resigned, so, um, recommending removing that, and then, um.
That wasn't Debbie, just seven.
No.
It was one of the clarification purposes.
Absolutely.
Yes, it is. Also, the thing we discussed earlier, we, I take the opportunity to clarify that, uh, you can submit your election materials prior to that first Monday, it's just the deadline will remain the Friday at noon. And then, uh, currently, required anything over a thousand dollars to get your approval and to bid it out, and these days, everything costs over a thousand dollars, it's really been constraining, um, really slows us down, oh, hang on, I gotta put that on an agenda, we missed the advertised, so it's gonna be a month and a half. So, um, this will be an opportunity to increase that, and what I recommend is five thousand dollars. Yeah, any other changes we might, those are all the ones we talked about that have come up. Uh, we would need to do an ordinance, first and second reading before the beginning of August, so it might require a special meeting to get it accomplished, uh, in time to turn it into supervisor of elections to get it on the ballot.
Okay.
Now, my, my comment about seven point oh eight, the bids, contracts, and expenditures, um, I don't actually remember that many items coming before us.
Well, if it's an item that, um, regular operation, you've already, uh, approved in the budget, it's regular operations or an emergency situation, um, I'm able to approve those.
Standing on.
When the lift station generators went down, we spent a lot of money on them, because it just, it was an emergency.
Right, so, so can't do without those stations.
Yeah.
Um, my concern about this is, to, it's, it's more for, it's more for exceptions than, than planning. Um, five thousand dollars is actually, it's still a lot of money, especially a small town, and, um, we're doing, so this would be submitted in a single ordinance, right?
Or we could break it up, if the fear is, you know, if a voter doesn't like one thing, they vote down all the changes, um, might not consider multiple, uh, boxes on the, on the ballot.
But about this particular item, I think five thousand dollars is, is high. Um, I mean, that can easily turn, that can easily turn into, you know, twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I think it would be more reasonable and probably would be more acceptable, um, to the public to, you know, double it from one thousand to two thousand, but, because we really haven't heard about many of these.
Well, I don't know that five thousand's gonna turn into twenty thousand if we only give five thousand dollars spending in the forty.
Well, I'm saying, if, in other words, each, instead.
He's just gonna go, man, three and five, it costs five thousand.
Well, then, yeah, then he could do the same thing at one thousand, I mean, you know, he could, uh, all of that does, all of that does add up.
I'm just saying, the whole, the whole scheme of things, these things.
You're just uncomfortable at five thousand, you'd like two thousand, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, then that's, okay.
No particular, obviously, it's not taking the money home. Um.
No, but a lot of times, things do, I, I, I know I've said over there, things, you know, occur, and, and he can't move on because he does have to, because he does have to bring that, that to us. Um, so what's the recommendation that we would, when would we do these meetings, when will we have these meetings?
We would get to bring back an ordinance, or ordinances for these changes, um, for our first, and then the second reading, so that it was adopted, uh, in time before the beginning of August to, to give them to the supervisor of elections to pass and put them on the ballot.
Bobby, can we bring each one of these, um, on the ballot, can they be, can they be all separate? Do they have to be?
I think they should be all separate.
I think they should, I was, I was gonna make that recommendation too, is that they, they be all separate, so we have to have an ordinance for each one? Or?
I think so.
Um, and mayor, also I have a question about another provision. Um, the, um, change the authorization to hire a clerk. I'm not that familiar with clerk provisions, um, in city charters or whatever, but I know it's considered an office of, of kind. Um, I'm not sure of the way this is worded, and I would turn that over to Bobby. This, um, to me, the creation of the position of clerk, um, I think, I'm guessing, might need to occur in an additional spot, other than just saying to hire a clerk, I don't know, I, I would like to get an answer to that. Is that sufficient just to say to hire a clerk? Um, should it, should it be created, you know, in a section, in another, own self?
Three point oh four.
And I don't think that's something that could necessarily be answered now. It doesn't need to be.
We can, we can bring the solution in the form of an ordinance, thank you.
Right, I'm saying, is that the right way?
Okay, so commissioners, um, are we, are, are we ready to do this?
I just have a question, if you're gonna hire a clerk, what kind of salary are you thinking?
Well, uh, later in the agenda, I'm requesting that, put out, uh, an R F P for our compensation study, so they would advise us on what is comparable for a city of our size and budget, will be an appropriate salary.
It would be, basically, would be the position that, with Karen, where Karen sits, right?
Yes, she was hired as clerk when we found out that wasn't possible, so she's deputy clerk now.
It's just our charters, have a clerk in there, and to have the administrative supervisor.
Well, we used to have a clerk, nineteen years ago.
I do, I'm just looking at that, I'm so quick, whenever we hire a system, city attorney.
But no, I see what Commissioner Dugia was saying, I don't think it would be proper, I mean, it may be proper to remove that responsibility from three point oh four, but that's not where we would create the, the position of clerk. So just we would strike it, strike, just strike it out of there, but we're gonna have to put it, maybe.
We have to.
Do we need to establish it in the charter?
Do we even need to have it?
It's like we don't establish.
I mean, that's something to think about, do we have to have it in our charter? Do we have to have the actual clerk in our charter? And that's something, you know, um, keep in mind too, Bobby, that, uh, well, Lacca right now is going through a charter revision. Very expensive charter revision, so, and they, he has a clerk, and I think he has an assistant clerk. Um, they're establishing, I'm not sure.
You can find out if we even need to, for, for staff, you don't establish any other position except Chinese.
But these, uh, system is definitely totally other difference.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it's a very responsible position, it's the custodian of the public records and seal, and I'm guessing that this person needs to be specifically designated, and I'm just guessing.
Well, Bobby, if you'll look into that for us, so we've got.
The, the only problem is there's not enough time. If I come back with an answer at the next meeting.
You need to come back with ordinances at the next meeting.
Yeah.
We need to have ordinances at the next meeting. So your decision should be in an ordinance.
I can see.
Yeah, it's like in a term. They don't have to be long ordinances.
They'll be very short.
Yeah, very short. But I think that's, I think Bobby, that would, to me, would be because we're dealing with a time, with a time issue. That if we did that at the July meeting and then we set the second meeting, a special meeting in July, then we could get on to Charles at that time.
Make sure it's, where overturn it, the proper language. What time, what time, what, when is the meeting in July? It's.
Four to fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, that's on the week.
We're going to have to be.
At least ten days.
At least ten days in between.
But you can also go ahead and you can, can you pre-advertise? No, you have to have the final, you have to have the final. But if we do it on the fourteenth and you advertise, we have to get it to Charles at some point from noon on that Monday until noon on that Friday, that first week of August.
Yes, this would be.
So just to give y'all a couple of extra days if we need it.
For the week, if I advertise it on the fifteenth.
We'll send it to the paper.
You can have it, yeah, we can send it to the paper on the fifteenth and then ten days later, so you can have it on July twenty-fifth.
When is, so if you send it on the fifteenth, when does it actually go into paper? The sixteenth? Runs on the Tuesday, right, nineteen?
It would run on the Tuesday.
When's the, when's the fifteenth on Friday? So it would run on, it would, it could possibly get one on Saturday.
Okay. Would be best if you, if you could get it on Saturday. And then we would have to meet on the twenty-sixth of July, that's a Tuesday, either that Monday or Tuesday, the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, probably the twenty-sixth of July.
Twenty-sixth would be good because of the Florida Main Street conferences.
Okay.
So we could put that down, I guess, Commissioner Duvio. On the second page, do we really need the change in six point oh five about qualifying period? Because qualifying is usually a specific.
Yes, that's what Bobby has, they've spoken to as far as you could open it up. Bobby, do you want to? And they also need some, we need clarification there as well, right?
Hey, I think we at least put in there that it does not include that, that.
You have to have a cutoff date. That's the one Charles, Charles did say that. You have to have that cutoff date, which would be that August. I mean, that Friday at noon. So you would have that as a cutoff day.
Like this, this is qualifying for ballot and my understanding is most local governments have just a set time that you qualify for ballot. It's got a, it's got a beginning and a end.
That was not my understanding, but if we were, Mr. Overturn told us that we were the only ones.
That have a beginning, yeah.
That have a beginning. Walacka doesn't, Walacka doesn't.
All right, really? I must be old.
So I, I guess we probably need a motion to direct staff to bring back those ordinances.
Okay. So we have a motion, Commissioner?
What's the, I guess, like, the amount that we.
The amount?
Amount for this. I'm still recommending the five thousand.
I think two.
I think five is fine.
So someone could.
So let's, can we get a motion, please? Somebody? Please, somebody? If none, we'll hand it over to Commissioner Banks. I'm going to make a motion, get a motion.
Motion to direct staff to bring back the ordinances.
Yeah.
Put the five thousand dollar cap.
Yeah. As suggested. Really, you could do as suggested, the motion, as suggested with the, with the clerk, possibly that clerk language. And we have a motion, we have a second.
A second, yes, there we go.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. And so move.
The next item is to schedule our, our tree plan workshop as well as the budget workshops. And I've set out a whole list of dates. I'm recommending two o'clock in the afternoon. Here in the evening, we can really, we'll, we'll set up a table and sort of go through the budget with each department director there and.
And what date is that?
Well, I did receive a schedule come out from a couple of commissioners. It looks like the earliest would be July fifth. Is everyone available July fifth?
No, I sent you something. I, I sent you something that said I am, that is the one day I'm not available.
So how about July sixth?
I'm sorry.
This is what happens when you go to.
July sixth is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Two o'clock, don't work.
Yeah, that's just. And what workshop is that?
That would be the general fund.
Okay.
The what?
The general, I'm sorry.
The general fund?
I have a question, I have a question about this. It occurred to me when I looked at the layout. Could we possibly do general fund and then do, I think you, I'm trying to find my copy of your memo. Could we do the CRA and Better Place Plan with the utilities department? Those, those are fairly short sections of the budget.
Well, the enterprise funds, particularly gas and water, we're going to talk about rates.
Yeah.
Whether we need to increase our rates. I think that may go on for a while. It's a discussion.
But they, I mean, there should, that should be pretty covered, right? I mean, they should have a proposal. I mean, did, we did the gas rates, right?
We, we raised the base rate.
Okay.
Gas prices have gone through the roof. We've already reached.
We haven't yet, we haven't. We, what we raised was more the administrative service fees for the gas.
Hopefully by then we'll have a projection of how we made out this year, optimistic, but not in the water.
I'm comfortable with how he, him having to divide, him wanting to divide that up.
So do you want to do the seventh or wait and do the next week on the twelfth for the enterprise funds? The seventh would be two days in a row. You're okay with that?
Yeah, because we have three workshops. Okay, so as my understanding, you said that you wanted to get the published version of the budget out by Wednesday, the eighth?
Well, that's just the, the, I think you're packing out a week out of the fourteen. We have to set the tentative meld rate on the fourteen.
Okay.
So it would be helpful if we, it would be helpful if we pack them in the seventh and twelfth. We may make changes, you know, when we talk about it, the commission meeting, but we're just doing the best we can.
At two o'clock on, on those, on those days?
We do the seventh at two o'clock for enterprise funds and the twelfth would be the better place in CRA.
Okay, now we're doing one on the sixth, right?
One on the sixth.
Six is general.
Seven.
Seventh is enterprise funds.
And the twelfth?
Twelfth would be better place in CRA.
Okay, now what time, two o'clock?
Two o'clock at all, yes. And then when would you like to have the, go over the tree plan with the tree board?
What day?
They only gave me one date, which was June fifteenth, which is just not, not available. So we'll, we'll come back to them with a date.
Okay, June fifteenth is not available?
Correct. We didn't have all of you on the fifteenth, so.
Oh, okay, because I said I could do the fifteenth and we're done by two, but I can't stay out until two. Okay, but other people are not available.
Commissioner, I, I know Commissioner Burton, he won't be available. I would imagine he will be available by then.
I don't think I will be.
So you want to do the tree of the?
Be a little loopy.
Nineteenth or twenty?
No, I will not be over the tree.
The tree workshop, tree plan on the nineteenth or twentieth or twenty-first, that'd be another week.
No, well, so we don't have.
What about they, are we going to do it in the evening or can we do it during the day? Can we not do it on the fourteenth? We have a commission meeting that day?
Just makes it a long day.
Oh, wow, you know?
Why, but, I mean, how long will that take?
I have no idea.
The regular meeting is on the twenty-first of July. If you go into July, the regular meetings on the twenty-first of July at one o'clock.
Okay, but wouldn't that be nice to get it done before the regular meeting on the fourteenth? So that if we wanted to pass something, we could do it.
What about the nineteenth?
Eighteenth's available.
But that's not before the fourteenth.
I'm sorry. And you're going to have to make sure it works with their schedule too, right?
Well, maybe the fourteenth, we have to advertise it.
Ten days.
Ten days.
Do you think we could get it done? Do you think that like if we did it on the twelfth, do you think we could get it? I mean, how long do you anticipate that's going to take? An hour?
Yeah, it's not that long.
Because we started at noon on, on, on the, on the twelfth before the budget workshop at two.
And you bring sandwiches?
That's up to you. We can, we're going to make it a working lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying not to, for us to kind of, if we have to cram some of these in, we got a lot that we have to do and not have to be here every, you know, everybody have to be here every single day.
Okay, well, we can provide lunch on the twelfth and then we'll make it a working lunch with a tree board.
Okay. Or bring your own. Bring your own lunch.
Right.
The twelfth or the fourteenth.
Twelve, twelve, twelfth at twelve o'clock.
Twelve o'clock and bring your own lunch.
Okay, what else do we have, Charles? What other dates do we need to go over?
That's, those are the workshops.
Okay, so I think we need.
Also need to, recommend moving the August commission meeting two days earlier to Tuesday the ninth, because Florida League of Cities always falls on your August meeting.
I will.
Last year you moved it. Because some of you wanted, like, to attend that.
It's Dylan Broward Kelly.
I saw who, that we move it to August nine.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Sir.
Second.
I have. That's a important meeting.
A important meeting?
Where's George today?
I can see that's probably an awful meeting.
Yeah, that's on the Tuesday, on the Tuesday.
You said no.
You want to do, can you do it the eighth?
Monday?
The Monday?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
What about Monday then, Charles?
Unfortunately.
What?
Yeah, she's one that celebrates the whole year.
Right.
I mean, the whole line.
If we went on a Tuesday or a Thursday, what about the third? The first week?
Uh, the two, the second?
Fourth?
August second?
The second.
The day after the first?
I won't be home that week.
Bobby will be, just not.
That just, that just shortens, that just shortens the preparation, advertising and. That's also, isn't the first week of August qualifying?
Yeah. Right, and even if Charles is handling it, don't think people are going to call you.
Right.
Just take August off.
So, you know, we, I mean, honestly, does it, do we, do we have that ability to take August off? We've got a lot going on in August. Charles says, no, we don't.
I could fill it up.
But let me say this, we don't have to have, Bobby, think about this. We've got just that, that, that eleventh and twelfth. We could move the commission meeting to the following week. That's something to think about. Do you have anything on the sixteenth or the eighteenth of the following week?
Planning and zoning would be the eighteen.
Yeah, I would have that something, I have the eighteenth for planning, but.
We can move it to the sixteen.
Okay, so two, three, the sixteen.
With your August meeting?
Yes.
What, what are we doing in August?
Send us a calendar, I should all let it.
So we're doing this on the eighteenth, is that it?
Well, we're asking about the sixteen, planning and zoning is on the eighteen.
Okay, we would have our commission meeting on the sixteen.
Aye, okay, so now what about Bobby on the sixteen?
No, I'm here.
Are you good?
I just have a second.
Are you sure?
The second Tuesday is.
I see, okay.
The Tuesday night is dinner night too.
Commissioner DeVito, are you available?
I got scolded.
I actually don't know. I did, I, I covered the period that your dates covered.
Yeah.
I don't.
Well, you'd be coming out of Broward, so that.
And hon- honestly.
Florida League is through the thirteenth.
If you wanted to have it on the ninth, and I'm not trying to be, their meeting will be done before any business. They're done, I've never been there more than an hour.
Okay.
So I can be here by seven o'clock. Most likely, if you wanted to have it.
Let's do that. That first hour tonight was all presentations.
Yeah, okay, so let's, let's go back to the ninth.
Go back to the ninth.
Because I do want to, did you make the motion? Did you make the motion, Commissioner Burton?
Okay, so we've gone around Mulberry, Bush, and here on the ninth again.
Back on the ninth.
I did make a motion for August ninth, yes.
Okay.
And it's going to be inseminable.
And we have a second?
No, I'll just come at seven. It will be, it will be a sixth. It'll be here at seven.
We have a second, do you have a second? Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, okay, the ninth has it. We don't have to date, we have to vote on those special meetings also for the, I mean, for the workshops, so we have to vote on that.
I think I have a consensus. I think I can just schedule them.
Okay.
It has six, seventh and twelfth.
Good. Yes, sir, you do that. Six, seven, twelfth of July.
Okay.
And two.
All the two.
Okay, six, seven, twelfth.
On the twelfth, it's at twelve, okay.
Right, so Mayor, I have one question about the budget workshop. Charles, I had asked you, well, I'd asked the commission, and you, I think you said Bobby will work on this, about replacing the county fire tax that we eliminated with the tax of our own to basically replace those funds. Remember, we talked about the fire tax. Would we not cover that at one of these meetings on the sixth, seventh or twelfth?
We'll talk about the fire department on the sixth, so it'll come up at that time. We'll see how much he's requesting. And then obviously, if we want to fund that through a fire fee, partially, he's asking for his volunteer incentive program again and so forth.
Right, I mean, we're, we're perpetually underfunded in the fire department. I'm just saying, I don't know, is there enough time at this point?
There'll have to be.
If you want to, the discussion is let's, let's do our own fire fee and we would bring you, let's see, that's on the sixth, we'd have time to advertise it as an item on the July agenda.
I mean, that has to be a whole separate ordinance. I don't know if there's any extra advertising that you have to do. It's come, but anyway, so you're saying the sixth is when we'll be talking about.
Don't know all about that. They went through that black and just before I left, they drafted the fee.
Okay, okay. Do we have to vote on the workshops? We don't have to vote on the workshops, we just agreed to.
I don't think, I think you just agreed to.
Okay, we just agreed to it. Let's move on. Can we move on to the authorization for compensation study, RFP?
Yeah, this was, it's in the budget amendment mid-year and since it's over a thousand dollars, I need your approval to put it out to bid.
I assume.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay?
Nay. You can't have more, you know what I'm saying?
No, I mean, so you're not in favor of him doing a compensation to, to see.
I need to close out the.
Close that out, okay, so I'm going to close out our, our general meeting for right this moment and open up the CRA.
So this item, I'm going to send over here. So that is the light up, is that correct? The light up, yeah, so I had, had an inspiration. We've been talking about special events, Christmas time, a lot of things to go on at first weekend. And so I would outline for you my couple of, to light up Crescent City, which would be a month-long series of events. The folks that put on events could keep their event and have their logos and do it their way. We would sort of have an umbrella event. That first weekend, we kick it off, we turn on the lights. Maybe the second weekend, the partnership, we do a Christmas straw war, window decorating contest, or something else on the third weekend. And we encourage all of our residents. And we encourage all of our residents to light up their homes and light up their businesses and just make it a big celebration. And what I wanna show you is kind of aspirational video. Notice, we're not the size of this community, we're a garden. And this is, this would be something down the road, but it's, it's very aspirational and inspirational. Uh, and it does have some of the elements I wanna talk about lighting up our medians.
We have had so much positive feedback from the.
Next year, I'll ask for a tree. So when it flies, look at the green, the green median, see the green? That's what I wanna do on US seventeen in the middle. So that was kind of.
Okay, we will change the red light now then.
So, I did a preliminary, I worked with Ace Hardware on four hundred green deadlights and four hundred strands of a hundred white lights, good idea. Comes in about eight or nine thousand dollars. Uh, what I'm asking for tonight is a kind of a not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Because what we'll need to do is, um, run some, figure out electrical for the park, the front half of the park, where the smaller trees are. Run on the grounds, see a web of electrical outlets to each tree. Uh, and the, the lift rental and so forth, so these costs will come in. I hope it'll be much less than that, but. I don't wanna keep coming back and hold off till I come get approval. Uh, you can see, uh, this, the first column is what the adopted budget is of all our sort of programming. The improvements, we have a hundred thousand dollars, we have eighty-six thousand dollars left. The grant shows we have seventy-eight thousand, we've actually committed, um, probably half of that. So my intention would be to move money from improvements down to, uh, you see, we've got a little bit over on our festivals and special events. To, um, move that money down to that part so we can buy the lights and do, and do this. And this is really a multi-year investment because we'll save all this stuff, this material. And squirrel away for next year and I'll come back to you for a tree, uh, going in the year. We'll add a tree and every year we'll add something more and we'll just keep growing this thing, taking care of it and buy. So that we can eventually have this huge, to me, a Christmas celebration of lights is such an easy, easy, tangible, um, wonderful thing. It's like fireworks, those two things, people just come out. Fireworks and Christmas lights. And then we just encourage our residents, we can even create a, um, residential award for someone who just goes crazy in their yard and a commercial award. And just really encourage, um, and so we need to start all this now, uh, cause I've gotta order the, everything in advance and I gotta design the electrical system.
So you need a motion for us to approve for you up to twenty thousand dollars and?
Yeah, it's kind of like a budget for this project, not to exceed twenty thousand, nor I'll come back to you, obviously.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to share. This is a lot and just based on, um, what I've seen with the improvement on Central Avenue, even, we have the grant program. And we've worked on two buildings there and it's made a big difference. We don't have that big of a CRA budget. We have other historic buildings right on Central Avenue that are crumbling. We've got the Blue Moon Lodge that needs the roof and quite frankly, those two African-American churches need some serious help soon. To me, there would be more lasting and there's a much greater need. I mean, we couldn't have lights. But if our buildings are crumbling, um, I would rather see us use those funds on the buildings. And as well, um, part of our CRA plan is ecotourism. And I hate to say this, but lighting is one of the recommendations. Actually, I was reading on the Bat Conservancy today, because we have a plan to go on Saturday. FPNL and everyone else are trying to reduce the amount of lighting. We're not an urban area. We're, uh, we're an area that's talking about ecotourism, we're very, very small. That degree of lights, not necessarily on the median, but lighting up the park, which is a residential area. Cut the other way for our ecotourism. So, um, I just, I think this needs a little more, um, massaging about how we would do it. And I hate to spend money on lights on seventeen when our building infrastructure is really needing help.
But I, I feel, I understand what you're saying. I feel after these, we finish out our current grants, open grants. And this expenditure, if I were to spend it all, we still have a hundred thousand dollars for programming. And then next year, we get, um, kind of replenished in all three CRAs. So, um, I feel good that it's a good investment and I don't think I'll spend all that money, but I think it's, um, it'll just keep us moving forward. And then, um, we still have money for the grants.
Can I ask you a question?
For this year?
Yes.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can we take it out of better place? Can we take the twenty thousand out of better place?
As far as I know.
Let's look at better place. We still have funds in better place. We have quite a bit of funds in better place, haven't we?
Oh yeah, we have almost three hundred thousand dollars.
So if she's concerned about that with the CRA, um, do you, is that something that we could do with, do this, fund this out of, out of better place?
I think you could, it's not a disposable expenditure.
Do you have a concern with that?
When you say disposable, kind of isn't disposable, is it?
Well, we're not gonna throw them away at the end, same with, we install again year after year.
So, yeah, it would be an installation. I mean, in the city, it would be, I mean, it would be an installation here in the city. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, but. Um, but right now, we have a motion and I have a second to come out of the CRA funds. So we need to address that right now, so if, if there's no other discussion.
I'll look into it, if it's possible, I'll come back to that recommendation.
So we may as well take it off the table tonight. There you go.
No, except for the fact, you need to.
I need to order the lights.
He needs to order the lights. Can we make, can, okay, can we do an approval, approving you twenty thousand dollars? And then leave it up to Charles, the best place to take that money out of? Then we do a motion? Don't we have to be that specific?
I think, I think you have to be specific, not to your.
Where it's gonna, with this.
No, the constraint is you have to, if it's CRA money, you have to be convened as a CRA board, which you're.
We are right now a CRA board.
So you could say you're approving twenty thousand CRA funds. If you're not eligible to be a, a better place.
Okay. We won't do a motion for that.
Oh, let's get ready for this motion. I resent my motion for the twenty thousand dollars. For the, from the. CRA. And make a new motion for the possibility up to twenty thousand dollars from the better place.
For the park, for the CRA. For the lighting, for the lighting. In the medians, within the CRA. Are you good with that? Are you good with that, Charles? Okay, Bobby, you good with that? Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay? Um, approval, uh, you wanna go for the banner?
Oh, yes, the banner. This is, uh, we're working with a banner company, um, and we're not ready to order them, but because of the, I don't get approval now, I wanna get the banners for US seventeen. There's sunrise, sunset, everyone likes so much, um, cost in there. That's for sixty banners, I think. If it's actually less, once they figure out the number of brackets we have, it'll be a low of price. We could buy more brackets as well. We actually might have more.
Everybody that has seen those, those, the ones that they have been most impressed by.
I may just see that, so.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I think we approved the recognition of the funds for the purchase of the sunrise sunset banner.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
And then very quickly, I just wanna show you, uh, we talked a little bit about the, um, replacing the grass with brick last time. But only was clear to everyone that the attention was. So I'm, I'm bringing, I wanna show you, and maybe a couple of these you haven't seen, uh, the improvements downtown. This was, this building has been cleaned as you, this is not actually a photo, this is a photo shop, but it has been pressure washed and. The glass, broken glass has been repaired, new awnings are coming, the barber shop has been repaired. We don't have the, um, outer awning on there yet, but the, the cover's been repaired. So this shows it built out, uh, as you can see in this area, you really feel like the public's place ends at the edge of the sidewalk. So if you were to step off, maybe your heel or something, you're off in the grass and then, uh, there's sprinklers there to hit and so forth. So this extends that all the way out, so there's parrot for benches, polka dot and so forth, cappuccino example. Uh, this is the other project we're working on, uh, where again, you take that space, uh, this, this part here. This is not part of the project, uh, it's actually the ownership of this building over here. But again, the point is this coming in, adding in some shade tree, the, the palm trees are hitting into the power lines, they look shredded up there, you notice. To replace those, probably pretty brutal trees, to be more attractive. Uh, this, this was something we looked at purchasing this lot and they wanted just many times to get raised value, so we let that one go. But it's still a possibility, again, extending the public space. This is actually on seventeen, I just wanna show you these renderings, I couldn't verify, it showed you, uh, to add the, uh, knee wall, so you create, uh, lively aliveness. I'm very interested in participating, we're gonna work on getting some estimates for that. Drive up and see.
You're taking out the parts of knee wall?
Yes, we would, I would come to you. Yes, it wouldn't be approved today by DOT and we would do a parking agreement with them for our lot. Uh, their customers use our lot, we would just formalize that agreement that they need. They need our code with the use of our lot. This is another building, this one actually hasn't been painted since this photo. It looks much better. This is if they were to restore, restore.
It's kind of a maroon, our deep red awning and door, what's going in there now?
Real estate office. And there's a drapery business in there. In the left side of the pan. So this is improving, again, this, this space here, we're looking at, um, breaking that, it's all crushed. Concrete right now, actually breaking that, so that potentially it could become a public space where, um, a tenant might have, uh, this is like, there were multiple tenants in that building. It's a pretty good sized building. Uh, used to be a multi, it was built as a multi-tenant building, I don't know what its uses were. This is just some, some facade improvements, uh, T-City Music, uh, in the vacant building, if you were to, just some simple facade work. Put a sign up above, Crescent City Music, over here creating, again, a public space and, uh, even a food truck spot. This says food hall on it, you can't see Crescent City Food Hall, just as an idea, it's a big space. Uh, this building was, we were gonna go purchase it and then when called to make the offer, it was already on the contract. Uh, but these are some, uh, improvements that could happen to that building, various colors. This shows adding a door back here for a, a brewery, they could be a retailer in the front. Different colors and then again, creating gathering place, creating a public space. That's also non-conforming parking, where you actually stick out in the road when you park there. That's show the potential, um, if those folks, this one was done more recently, uh, beautiful building, I think it's really one of our treasures. But just, um, facade work, really just needs, the roof is good, it needs a little work up here to deuce. Then painting and then, uh, this is part of the same property, could be a great space, um, for public gathering and lighting, really lighting up the area. And this would show what it looked like, which is some shade tree instead of those little palm trees. You can see the condition of the palm tree. But the shade tree is really what we need out there, shade. Uh, then again, so literally, this is what's in the redevelopment plan, it has yellow brick, which I don't like. It has a grass strip here, which would be difficult to maintain. And you can see down here, this is, it shows red brick down here. But these are, we're looking at red brick, uh, plant clusters. This actually, this manufacturer took his picture in Richmond, it's actually Crescent Garden is the name of it, the company that sells those, I thought it was interesting. Great myrtle trees, hanging baskets, uh, the corners actually creates a little triangle bed, uh, could be beautiful flower beds. Banners and benches on Central Avenue, so great central really is a nice, attractive strolling place.
We start on the polls tomorrow.
Again, this will go back to this. Working in that area, great public space. Yes.
I could just raise, the, you shared the facade improvements for the old post office building. Does it resonate building? I, yes, I have heard from knowledgeable persons that that building may need structural assistance. That, I mean, that would be a potential one for grants to make sure that it's in good condition.
It's a tremendous trial bench.
Well, that, that's a big issue. And the other one is, everybody in the world, I don't know, um, if they've got a buyer yet. But the Sprague House, which I think, isn't that one of our historic buildings? Everybody who goes by that building and has any kind of eyesight for it at all, is very concerned about the structure of the Sprague House. So, um, if we have grant money for actual, um, you know, structural improvements. I think those two buildings need attention, not to mention the two churches.
This one, I've, I've actually spoken with several people that were all excited about lying and then I never saw them again, so I.
Cause they got into the bowels of that building, they got into the bowels of that building, not that one.
I got to the second floor, amazing, large apartments, four of them.
Yes.
Could be great, but she is, there, there are termite wings, like a layer on the floor, it's just.
Some of my questions could, offering a grant assistance. And I, I do think, I see one problem with our grant program, I think that money needs to be paid back eventually. So that, you know, I think it's more appropriate for it to evolve in some way. But is it possible that offering a grant would?
We do, we let them know. Yeah, we let them know that we have grants at all, we wanna work with them, we showed them this.
Okay.
And they were very interested. And I, I feel like we do get paid back, we, you know, if you pull permit, then we're gonna, your, the work's done, it's gonna create a, a new assessment property.
Well, you have grants and then you have, you have, uh, grants that are just given to you and you don't pay back. And then you have grants that you match.
Yeah.
They, they match. Um, there's all kinds of different grants out there. But grants really are not easy to come by. I mean, they only have so much money and.
I'm saying, our grant program, the one we gave to Scott King and the other buildings, that, we gave that money with no strings whatsoever. I'm saying our grant program, the one we gave to Scott King and the other buildings, that, we gave that money with no strings whatsoever.
There is a payback provision if he were to, to change it, paint over it or move the awning, sort of thing, but. No, we, that, we're saving the building. Same thing here. I recommend, we, we've gotta save that building.
Yeah.
So we may come back to you and say, we recommend a grant to termite, you know, to tent it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot.
And if it's a big amount, somebody asks for it, we'd say, well, we can match you. You know, we have, we have limited means.
So I was not aware and I'm glad.
It's just ten thousand dollars to people homes.
And I'm glad to know that you are actively trying to entice the buyer.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and that's, to me, the same thing applies to the Spray House because it's got, you know, it, it needs help.
Well, Christina deals with potential buyers all the time. They're, she's constantly been, uh, since she's been a mom.
I don't know that.
Well, that's. I mean, that's, that's just, I mean, I just know that with her and what she's been doing, she's been, she's been dealing with a lot of people. And, and somebody reached out to me, but one gentleman that was looking at buying the Spray House either, reached out to me. Um, and I don't know, and he kind of disappeared.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. He was looking at a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars in there, yeah. And, um, you know, so, uh, these buyers are coming to the city. They're talking to Charles and Christina.
Yeah.
Um, constantly, but just getting them to pull the trigger is a whole nother, it's a whole nother thing. So. You done, Charles?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Do we have your report? Has everybody had a chance to go over Charles's report? Oh, I need to close out the CRA. Thank you, Gary, for keeping us on track.
Thank you.
Closing out the CRA and opening back up our commission meeting.
I just wanted to note, uh, we'll see how it'll be closed on the, the client.
Okay. Um, is, you have his report in front of you. Does anybody have any questions?
Um, I have a question about two things I did not see in the report. Um, one is, uh, what is the status after a workshop of the roof issue for the Newman Lodge?
Uh, well. We're hoping today, was it today, uh, Rufus is gonna look at it and get, we're still waiting on a bid of, of price. And the challenge has been getting someone over there willing to go there and look at it. So I think that may have happened yesterday or today. So we're hoping to get a price.
Cause you did very well with Central Avenue. So, um, okay, there's that. And then what is the, the status as far as meetings or whatever? Um, with our waste project contracts?
We're still waiting for their, uh, draft, the proposal. For most, but they were putting one together.
And Daniel reached out to me, um, actually the other day when I had that conversation meeting about the property at the end of Central. Um, he said that they just about had it all ready to come to you, to go to you.
So it'll be soon.
So should I say, are we going to get options or are they just going to give us the total option?
Um, although, I see it. I'll let you go.
One question. Title, where are they gonna start on your little yellow house?
Uh. I don't know.
Okay. That's, that's been, uh, we've been, um, some time here.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're coming up pretty soon. So, for when you're least.
I heard, yeah, good point. I was thinking about that. Mr. Gollis in the bicycle, wasn't he in the black? They don't use.
I, 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 I was also, I, I.
Yeah.
I've never really dealt with him. I, I would deal with, um, Krista under there.
Well, it said Gollis, I don't remember Gollis. I thought there was that article about Trail Towns and there were two bicycle features. You, I think there was our Gollis, because you said Gollis. And I thought, I have no idea.
Okay, is everybody good with, um, Charles's, no more comments on Charles's city manager report? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for commission comments. Do you have any comments? Start with you, Commissioner Burton. Okay, you already said your comments.
I'm saying that.
Said yours, I'm done. Okay, Commissioner DeVita?
Sure, thank you. Um, I would just like to make everyone aware that, um. A very large part of a tree came down across our driveway while we're out of town. It covered, um, all of Main Street. It would have killed anybody that was underneath it. Um, as well, a very large branch came down from a heritage oak, uh, before that and gave a line of harm. So I cannot emphasize to y'all enough. Um, the report and the recommendation that Advanced Tree Care did for the Heritage Oaks over in the park. Um, that came in, in twenty nineteen. In April, it's been over three years. We haven't done anything. The concerns focused around the soil compaction. That is basically, uh, damaging the roots to the point where it's gonna damage the tree. I think we need to give this some attention before we lose the trees and heaven forbid, um. Come on. Underneath when that happens. So it's, it's a serious issue. I mean, more than one person could have been killed right up there on Main Street. That was, um, probably a couple of tons of trees and I'll share with y'all photos.
Was it your tree? Was it one of our trees?
It's a city tree.
Okay, so it was a city.
Yeah, we paid to have a huge one taken down from that tree that was over our driveway a couple of years ago. And, um. I mean, it's, I think it was one of the ones damaged in hurricane. But anyway, this report, you all have it from Advanced Tree Care. I really think we need to take this seriously because it applies to quite a number of city trees. And we can save our trees and save money. So, um, that, I just want to share that with y'all and I'll send you.
Thank you. Is that it? Um, I do wanna make clarification, um, Commissioners, you've all received something in the mail. From a concerned citizen.
You mean the anonymous letter?
The anonymous letter, right. And so, I mean, I hope if you, if any of you had that concern, um, that you would come to me about it. It is absolutely, absolutely false. And, um, I think that it just. I, I, I don't understand why people are not willing to stand behind these letters with their names. And come to us rather than try to spread these type of rumors. But I just.
Trouble.
And, and especially for you, Commissioner Banks, I just wanted you to know that in no way. We are just about to celebrate our thirty-fifth wedding anniversary. We've been together almost thirty-nine years. And he's stuck with me whether he wants to. So, so with that, um, that's all I wanna say. And I know we can't talk about it except for the fact I, in public, I just. Anytime with these people, um, anybody listening, that if you have these concerns. Please, by all means, reach out to us. Don't do it anonymously. Um, I think it's. A lot of things out there on Facebook that's really ugly and, and they do it anonymously and. Stand behind your word if you're gonna say it. So that's all I gotta say. And with that, I can get a motion to close?
Well, I just wanna say one thing. Um, actually, that was a very ugly letter. It had nothing to do with city business.
No.
It was just ugly. Um. So people shouldn't even try that stuff. I don't think you've heard about this from any of us. Um, and, you know, if there's a concern about finances or some actual issue, you know, fine, go to the city manager. But it'll just be ugly. And I'm sorry that happened.
And if you just wanna hurt me, that's okay. I can take it, but don't hurt other people trying to get at me.
Exactly, that was true. So, anyway.
Anyway, with that said, I would need a motion to close?
I'm so.
Just give it to me.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I do have something, so just. So y'all can be thinking about it. Um, it pertains to the masonicological concerns citizens. So I really think there's three ways that we could go about it. The first one would be just a simple lease. Where there would not be an option to buy, uh, like it could just be for a term of years, one year, five years, something like that, where we retained ownership of it. Um, but they used it. Or we could have an instance where there was a lease, say for like three years with an option to buy for a dollar. At the end of three years, if we were satisfied with improvements they made and all that stuff, or obviously there's the option to go ahead. And deed it over to them. I would just caution that we not do anything. As far as transferring it, ownership until they have their five oh one, because. They're immediately gonna take on a almost thousand dollar a year tax consequence.
They're gonna take on a lot of financial burden.
That's the only caution that I would have is just, if we're going to need the property over to them, is to not do it until they have their, um, nonprofit status. They don't take on a, a tax liability right away. Um, but I just brought that up. It went on that, but if y'all have any questions, I don't need to explore any other avenues.
Can, can, can we sell that property? Sell it, just that way?
Just to anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just sell it to them, they want. You know, what, I mean, then they have ownership. I mean, absolutely ownership.
The, you know, the third option would be to deed it over to them, sell it to them for some amount of money.
Well, he's just a deed it over, like, here you go.
Well, you would have to have, you have to have some sort of a dollar, ten dollars. You have to, you, when you do a deed, that deed, there has to be a monetary.
But it does have some value. The, the property has some value to see. Um, it's not ten dollars, but, but, um. You know, that, that just cleans it up per se and they own it and then they can, then they can do kind of what, uh. Mr. West said, Ron can go in and do what I'm doing and Joe can come in and do what I'm doing. But, but anyway, I'm just saying that, you know, I think that's an option.
I, I think the three years and then look at it then. Then with a lease for three years, I, fresh when you say it, and then bring it back and look at it again. And that takes a lot of the pressure. So they're just stopping now. They're just starting now. They're just trying and they. Really, they got good intention and they want it, they want the building. So if we get three years and, you know, then go back and visit and get up into three years. And see where they stand. I think that would be a good. Not, and I, I think they will be happy.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that we just don't set them up for failure and that's, and, and Bobby's made a very good point with that, that if we. Turn over ownership right now, the financial burden could.
I mean, an insurance.
Yeah, the insurance, the liability, everything else that's gonna fall into that, you know, so. Um, that just sets them up and that's the last thing we wanna do.
Yeah, cause I think the la, yeah, the last thing we want is to be back in this situation and.
Well, and, and to harm them in any way either, so.
And the whole point of the workshop was, it's the Newman Lodge, there's. It's a contributing structure and there's a lot of history there. So the hope was to have a win-win. And because of what is, including Commissioner Banks' history, the town history. Um, and I think Commissioner Banks is on the right track to give them, to help them along, to. You know, to make this a process that will work for everyone. I, I think he's got a good handle on it.
Diane, you wanted to say something. You got, you got one. Would you go ahead?
Thanks, I'd say for testimony. I don't understand why we're not handling the lodge the way Sten and we're handling Little Blue House. The city owns the building. Why aren't we handling?
We don't own the building.
We don't own the blue lodge. We're leasing it from them.
We lease it from them, yeah.
We, um.
From the women's club.
For the women's club.
Yeah, it's, it's a very odd thing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very odd setup that.
It happens.
It works. It's working. It's working. So.
Well, actually, we can learn from that.
We can learn from, yeah, definitely.
But I just wanted to say if there was something else that I wanted to look into before we talk about it and vote on it.
Okay.
There you go, up to me to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second, second motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When you got, all in favor, leave.